Okay. So I'll call the town of Groton Planning and zoning commission regular meeting to order. First item, small call outside.
Here.
Just barely.
Steve Hudecheck.
Yeah.
Kevin.
Here.
Lauren. Lauren, you're here. Everybody's present? First, next item is public hearings. And the public hearing is for S U B twenty four zero zero two, Summers re-subdivision. You read the legal ad.
A notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on November twelfth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. In community room two, town hall annex one three four Groton Long Point Road and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Sub twenty four dash zero 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 two cam re-subdivision of land of Mark Summers, creating two residential lots on a two point two two acre parcel. The parcel is identified as two six six zero eight one six eight four six six two seven. Eight fifty, also known as eight forty eight Noank Road, R S twelve zone. William Sweeney, applicant, Mark Summers owner. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website, meeting calendar. Applications are on file and available for public inspections during normal business hours at the planning department, one three four Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut. Date November twenty fourth at Groton, Connecticut.
I, I do know Heather and her father, which are involved in this from my dealings with the Republican Town Committee, but it will not affect my decision making, voting on these items.
So you're not recusing yourself?
I am not recusing myself. So for the public hearing, we'll first hear from the, from the applicant or applicant's representative. From the town staff and then anybody in the public that wishes to address us. And then open it up to the commission for any questions or comments they have. Any questions that are unanswered will go over, repeat around in the cycle until all the questions are have been addressed and then we will, if possible, close the public hearing. At that time, you cannot accept any new information affecting the public hearing. So if the applicant would like to make the presentation?
Got some plans. You want to put them here?
I can put them right here. There's a camera in there. Gonna shrink it.
Yeah, I'm just on the parcel.
You can go on to zoom into that section right there.
You can move the gavel.
Good evening. For the record, tonight, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm of Tobin Carberry over in New London. I represent Dr. Mark Summers, who owns a two point two one acre waterfront parcel located at eight fifty Noank Road here in Groton. On behalf of Dr. Summers, I've submitted a fairly simple re-subdivision application and the ancillary coastal site plan application for the two lot re-subdivision of this property, which is located in your R S twelve district and what as well, it's in your coastal area management zone. Joining me tonight in the audience is Dr. Summers. I do know he's on call and he may need to leave if he gets a call, so please bear with us tonight. I have got the plan in front of you, page one of our re-subdivision plan. The subject property tonight encompasses two residences on a single lot, both of which were built in the early eighteen hundreds, well before the adoption of zoning or subdivision regulations. Both homes are accessed by a common shared driveway. And there's also several other accessory structures. If you had a chance to go out and look at the site, or if you review the plan carefully, that includes a garage, an in-ground pool, pergola shed, and a number of historic stone walls on the property as well. The property itself sits on BB Cove. It's across the street from BB Pond Park. And directly adjacent to the Towns End Preserve and Trail on BB Cove, which is owned by Avalonia. There is certainly no lack of accessible, publicly accessible waterfront or open space opportunities in the immediate neighborhood of this parcel. The main house, which is shown here as the two and a half story house, is just over four hundred, forty two hundred square feet in size, and it's where Dr. Summers resides with his wife Heather. There's also a cottage on the property, and that's the one and one half story house out near Noank Road. That's just over eleven hundred square feet in size, and it was formally approved as an A D U back in two thousand twenty one. The fundamental purpose of the re-subdivision tonight is to put the cottage and the main house on their own separate lots. Earlier this year, Mrs. Summers' mother passed away. My client and his wife would like to move her surviving father, who was still independent, into the cottage and subdivided off from the house so he can own that property outright. This lot division qualifies as a re-subdivision under your regulations as the Summers parcel was once part of a larger assemblage of land to the north that was later subdivided. So I'm gonna just try to flip the plan to the proposed division plan now. Can you zoom out just a little bit? So the re-subdivision of this two point two one acre parcel entails the division of the existing parcel into two conforming R S twelve lots. The first is encompassing point two seven acres and surrounds the cottage. And then an additional one point nine three acres around the main house. Both houses and both properties will continue to be used only for single family residential purposes. Each of the proposed lots meets or exceeds all the bulk and dimensional requirements of the R S twelve district. And we are proposing a deeded access easement over the shared driveway that will be recorded at the time the subdivision plan is recorded. Both homes are already served by public sewer, but public water is not available to this property. So we are going to be installing a new independent well for the cottage. And that's, that's to meet, remain in compliance with current health code. See that well right here? This lot division proposal has no other site changes. There's no construction activities proposed other than the installation of that new well. In fact, as if you drive by this property after this subdivision approved, it'll be invisible to you. Everything will continue to function just as it does today. We have requested two waivers of your subdivision regulations tonight. The first is section four point five one water supply facilities. The only water line within a thousand feet of this property is across the bridge and BB Cove in, in the district of Noank. That water line cannot be extended across the bridge, and we did talk with Noank Water. We have submitted correspondence from them into the file. And Noank Water has no plans to extend service to this, to this property in the future. The second waiver is section four point eight underground utilities. Both the main house and the cottage on the property are currently served by overhead power lines, and we're just asking for a waiver to maintain the existing utility connections. Both lots, as I said before, are located in the coastal management zone. As we indicated on our coastal site plan application, BB Cove is an estuarian embayment. Portions of the site are within the coastal flood hazard area. No tidal wetlands have been identified on the site. And as I've indicated previously, the existing site is developed. It's currently used for residential purposes. It has improved lawn coming down from both house sites along with typical residential landscaping down to the waters of BB Cove. There's no significant natural communities of flora or fauna. There's no significant historical or cultural features. And, and really, this project proposes no actual physical construction activities or modifications to the site, other than the installation of the new well. It's really just a simple lot division to allow an existing residential property, which is non-conforming with two individual homes, to be on separate standalone lots. So consequently, you know, we would submit that the project has no impact on coastal resources, and there's obviously no requirement to mitigate. We do know that coastal resource policy does encourage maintaining public access to the coast. But we believe, and I think your staff agrees, if you've read their staff summary report, that this site is inappropriate for such access. Due to the existing residential development, you can see how it's laid out on the site. The configuration of accessory structures and the historic stone walls. Meaningful public access cannot be reasonably provided to the coastal waters through this property. The bottom line is there's just simply not enough space on this small two point two acre lot to reasonably separate public and private space. And that's one of the, I think, one of the most important criteria when you evaluate whether or not a property has the ability to provide a dedication of open space or public access. Most importantly, though, I think meaningful public access already exists to the waterfront. Immediately adjacent, as I said, to the east, you can see Avalonia Land Conservancy on the right side of the screen. They own the property to the east, that preserve property, which has significant waterfront on BB Cove. So the public already has an opportunity if they want to get to the water there to use, to use that public area. Rather than dedicated public access or an open space dedication as required under your subdivision regulations, what we're proposing, and I think your staff has agreed, is a payment in lieu of open space into the town's open space fund. And we think this is really appropriate in this situation. Obviously, this is waterfront property. It's valuable. We did conduct an appraisal as required by your regulations and submitted that. And the payment in lieu of open space would be eighty five thousand dollars to the town, just for this very simple subdivision. And that eighty five thousand dollars, we believe, is a significant amount of money. It provide immediate monetary resources to the town, help the town, along with other funds that have been collected, to acquire much needed open space and possibly even other water access in other locations in the community where there isn't the kind of public land that's available in this neighborhood. So in conclusion, I would submit to you, this is a fairly simple application. We meet all the requirements of your subdivision regulations, obviously noting the two requested waivers that are, in our opinion, reasonable and common sense. And then also the eighty five thousand dollar payment in lieu of open space, we think is really the, clearly the most appropriate ways of satisfying our obligations under your subdivision regulations for open space purposes. So I want to thank you for your time and attention tonight. I'm going to remain available if you have any questions. Dr. Summers is here as well, and, and if you don't have any questions, I would reserve the right to rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. So to follow up what was just discussed, the required certificates of mailing are all in order. The legal notice has been posted as required. There have been no public communications in response to this application. So as part of this public hearing, the P Z C has thirty five days until you must close the hearing. So that's by December seventeenth. The decision must be made within sixty five days after that. Again, this is a two lot subdivision with two existing structures, the main home and an accessory dwelling unit. The purpose of this re-subdivision is to place each structure on its own lot. While coastal resource policy does encourage maintaining public access to the coast, this site is, we feel, is inappropriate for such access. Due to the existing residential development and configuration, meaningful public access cannot reasonably be provided to coastal waters. And as was mentioned before, meaningful public access actually already exists to the east of this property at the Avalonia property, the Towns End Preserve and Trail. And, and that enjoys significant waterfront on BB Cove. As, as, as was stated, this application has the property, had the property professionally appraised by a licensed real estate appraiser. The town's tax assessor has reviewed the appraisal and has accepted the, the assessment of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If accepted by the commission, in accordance with section four point nine five, a payment in lieu of open space of eighty five thousand dollars, which is the equivalent of the equivalent, the equivalent of ten percent of the fair market value of the land prior to the subdivision, shall be made prior to recording the plans. In addition, a couple other things, there is a pre-existing four foot wide batuminous sidewalk along the project frontage. The sidewalk was built several years ago as a town project is and is in good condition. And the director of public works has, has said he is okay with the existing sidewalk to remain as is. And as was mentioned previously, the applicant is requesting two waivers of the regulation. The first waiver is for the requirement to connect to public water supply. And the second is to eliminate the requirement to provide underground utilities to the subject property. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would wish to address us tonight on this subdivision? Anyone on the internet could raise your hands? I guess none. So I'll open it up to commissioners. Any questions or comments? I'll start with you, Hal.
I don't have any questions. It looks like this, we wouldn't have known if this was divided or not divided at this point. I would suggest that the potential that since it's going to remain, I can see waiving the requirement for putting utilities underground because there isn't any construction in this. With the caveat that if there ever is any change to utilities or construction, that that could be reevaluated. But other for this purposes of this, I'm fine the way it is. All right. I don't have any questions.
I'm fine with it. Thank you.
I'm fine with the project and the, and the waivers. Kind of concerned about the, the payment. Just seems like a lot. And I would be amicable to not having it ten percent. I mean, for a single property, I think the intent of when we were making that regulation was, you know, you're putting in fifty houses and they can't put them. But if somebody's dividing their own land in two, just doesn't seem right.
Kevin? So I'm, I'm fine. I think the subdivision was actually very well done because there's not much there. The utilities overhead don't bother me because we all live within Mystic and we all have to, you know, bear some of the burdens on that. Going underground seems like we don't, really don't need it. I'm, I'm also okay with section four point nine five. They haven't asked for a waiver of that, haven't asked for a change. It's what our regulation states pretty clear, right? So they've met that requirement. So I'm fine with this.
Lauren? I just had one question on the well. Has the site been approved?
So that's actually going to be one of the tech items. So one-
It's just the price you could drill, drill a well so-
Yes. So that, that has, that site has not been exactly approved. They will have to apply to ledge light and as one of the tech items, we'll have that on there as one of the notes that goes on the plans.
I would just add, apparently I'm losing my voice again. We did our surveyor, Peter Gardner, actually contacted the health department and proved out that that could be, well, could be located there. Because that is the only work we're actually doing is on the site. So yes, we will need to go get that permit to do it, but we didn't want to jump before we got approval from you guys to actually divide the, the property.
Oh, that's all right. I was just curious, more out of my own curiosity.
Not a problem.
So if there are no other questions or concerns? The public? Anybody on commission? Let me make a motion then to, and I assume the applicant has no problems with closing the public hearing. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Smooth and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We'll vote on the motion to close the public hearing for subdivision twenty four zero zero two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motions carried unanimously? Okay, next. The gen item is spec twenty four zero zero six Fairbairn S T R one Noank Road. Read the notice for that.
Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on November twelfth, twenty twenty four, seven P M. In community room two, town hall annex one three four Groton Long Point Road. And virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following special permit, twenty four dash zero zero six one Noank Road. Pin two six one eight zero six three nine four six seven four M D D zone. Proposal is to allow for a short term rental within the M D D. Review is per sections five point one dash seven point C and nine point four of the zoning regulations. Joffrey Fairbain, one Noank Road LLC owner, Joffrey Fairbain, Fairbain Brothers Builders applicant. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website, meetings calendar, applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department, one three four Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, dated this first day of November, twenty twenty four, at Groton, Connecticut.
State your name and either address-
I'm Martine Fairbairn. I'm Jeffrey Fairbairn's wife.
And I'm Jeffrey Fairbairn.
Jeffrey is a builder from Litchfield County. We moved here about ten years ago, part-time, fell in love with the area and decided that this is where we were going to retire. So you finished last year with this last clients up there, and we decided that we were going to take on this project on one Noank Road. There, I have a, yeah, if you don't mind. I put together just a little PowerPoint because pictures sort of say a lot. And then I'll just weave a narrative through, through the, so when we bought it, it was a vacant property, been vacant, I don't know, ten, fifteen years.
About ten years.
And if you can flip.
Sure thing.
Previously, that was it when we bought it in February.
Three, three and a half years ago.
Okay, then continue. So this was sort of the condition of it. All the windows were rotted out. The doors were, you know, everything was rotted out. There were holes in it. If you can keep going, we'll give you the, you could have animals. We noticed there were animals inside because of animal droppings. It was a eyesore. Not, not only that, but it was at risk of falling to the ground. So if you can keep going. The retaining walls on the, the side across from the marina were buckling. And the oldest part of the building had, as they did back in those days, a rubble foundation. So if you can keep going. We love historic preservation. We love history. So that's why this project meant so much to us. We immediately, before we started anything else, put a new roof on it to stabilize the property because if the roof wasn't on there, humidity, we ruin it. So we did that and we waited for things to tie up in Litchfield County to where we were down here full time, which is what we did. So a monument like this is so typical of this area, New England colonial architecture. It's a prime example. So we just really took it to our hearts and we felt they needed to be saved, and this is how we chose to do it. So my husband, who is a builder, and he won't say it, but I can say it for him, is a premier builder from Litchfield County with years of experience, took on great measures to bring this to the modern age. So if you can keep going. Here it is today. You can keep going. Here it is again. There it is again. Okay, so because of his years of building, all codes have been met, been met to the highest standards, FEMA, historic district, building codes, everything done by the book. So we're planning on turning this into an Airbnb, one single unit. It sleeps fourteen. There's seven bedrooms. So our intention is to use this as sort of a retirement property for us. We intend to Airbnb it, and we can absolutely make stipulations that there are no pets, no parties, no weddings. I've heard around the room that people are thinking we're going to use this as a venue for events, which is absolutely not true. No bachelor parties, no, God forbid, bachelor parties. And we are going to, the guests will be requested to keep the noise levels down after nine thirty at night in the exterior. And we can do that because now Airbnb allows you to make these stipulations. And also as guests can rate the Airbnb, the Airbnb can rate the guests. So there's more of a vetting going on than there used to be back in the day. So that's why we decided to take this on, and our vision for this is that there would be families visiting Mystic. Either they're going to the wedding, they want to go to the seaport, enjoy the downtown area. And it's walking distance to everything that's fun and wonderful to do in Mystic. But in addition to that, we meet all the retirements. In the special visitor, I'm putting it down here. There is zero impact of parking because as you see here.
Give me one second. I'm gonna bring that up on screen. Think it over the share? I don't know either. I don't know if it'll, if we're on this, it probably won't. So let me, let me stop, stop the share for a sec. No, no, you're fine.
I'm mismediating.
No, we just have to. All right. Yeah, well, no, it's there right there. We're gonna actually zoom out. All right, now slide it just a little bit towards, it looks like towards other way. Yep. It's stuck in the lift it up there. There you go.
This patio, this was where the existing driveway was, and we're actually doing the exact same thing. As you can see, there's parking for eight cars. Now, if you do the math, there's, it sleeps fourteen.
Oh, I think you actually point on there and then you can actually, on, on the, on the scale of your finger. Yeah.
So. Here's the entrance to the house. Here's the the driveway, and it's the same size it was prior to it, or having repaved it, which it began to be paving. But there's room very easily for eight cars, and I did this up with my SUV grand Cherokee. And I don't think that there will ever be more need for parking than this. In fact, more often than not, there will be less need because we're looking for a family, so maybe two, three cars. So we have every intention on following all the zoning codes, the lighting will be downward facing. As I mentioned before, we are putting now, putting in the regulations of our Airbnb that noises to be turned off by man severity. And this, we are not as city landlords. We are actually building house over a road. We're, we're in this big town, but between us and a friend of mine who also is going to help co-host who lives on Gravel Street, we have someone within five minutes, twenty four seven, all your life. So we are not out somewhere in Nevada managing an Airbnb where we don't know what's going on. So we hope to be good members of the community. We plan on joining the, the Chamber of Commerce. We are excited to move here full time, and this is how we plan on doing it. And when we were in Litchfield, we did the same, and we want to be part of this community and be good neighbors.
All right.
Turnover staff.
Thank you. All right. So again, the required certificates of mailing are all in order. The legal notice has been posted as required. There were two communications. One was in the agenda packet. There was a support letter from Daniel Packer in that you should hopefully have seen. And then you should have just received a letter today from Rose and John Gordon that was emailed out to you all. So again, similar to the subdivision, as part of this public hearing, the P Z C has thirty five days until you must close this hearing by the November seventeenth meeting, December seventeenth. That's wrong. Decision must be made within sixty five days after that. Short term rentals are conditional use within the M D D, the Mystic Downtown District, requiring special permit approval. This application complies with the conditions set forth in section five point one dash seven C, short term rentals. Applicant meets all the conditions, including but not limited to one parking space on premise for each bedroom. So again, covering a hundred percent of the, of the, of the bedrooms, or the seven bedrooms, is eight parking spaces. Also for meeting the conditions for noise, lighting, and code compliance. One thing that wasn't mentioned, in case you're wondering what it is, on the, on the, so on your, what is that, on your left hand side, kind of right in the middle, there's a, there's a shaded area. It's just to the east of the, the building itself. Yes, thank you. That is actually a right of way. That's actually in favor of Randall's Wharf. Sorry, it's on the western part of the, no, it's eastern, eastern. I said that wrong. Eastern, I did say right. That's a right of way that they share. That's part of, with Randall's Wharf, no parking will be allowed there at all. So that has to be, remain open for access in there. The site also contains on the southern side, an existing fence, and the applicant has planted a significant buffer on the southern side of the property. The applicant does not anticipate any disturbance in the, to the neighboring residents and is committing to maintaining a respectful presence in the community. This application also meets the special permit criteria in section nine point four dash six of the zoning rights. And if approved, the site plan approval will be handled administratively.
This is our first-
I know it is, yes.
And I assume everybody's received this email that is set up.
Which email?
Uh, was this afternoon around three o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. If you don't have a copy in the file, if anyone would like to look at it.
Okay. Well, open it up to anybody in the public wish to address us tonight on this item. If you want to stand up and speak into the microphone, state your name.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Lutz and I live at Two Fort Rachel Place, um, which is behind the Fairborn's property. Um, the Daniel Packer parking lot is kind of in between us and the street. Um, Fort Rachel. I met Martine the other day. She took me through the house. It's absolutely gorgeous, beautiful. Um, my concern is the noise um, from the patio. Because we are neighbors of the Daniel Packer already and you can imagine what that's like at one o'clock on a Saturday. And I appreciate that they're um, considering making a nine-thirty cutoff for the outside patio, but it is um, set up for fourteen people. It, the patio is has, I think seventeen seats available, five umbrellas. It's there for, for big gatherings. Um, which of course it would be for a fourteen um occupant home. And um, I have been in lots of Airbnbs before and I love them, but I also think that um, you can't control who comes in. And I've seen the, I've had uh, wedding, people going to weddings, puke on my front lawn. And I don't imagine they'll come that far from downtown, but I am seriously concerned about the noise level. Um, so if there's something that can be done in terms of regulating that, I, I've been told there's not a noise. Uh, a noise ordinance in Groton. I don't know if that's still true or not.
It's true.
But um, you know, that's, that's a big one.
Uh, my name is Nicholas Pettenati. I am married to Elizabeth Lutz. I live at the same residence at Two Fort Rachel. And after spending forty-seven years in the trades, I'm kudos to these people for what they did. Trust me, it's an impeccable job. One of the concerns I have, um, living as close in town, let's just say. We're gonna add another eight cars to the infrastructure that's already bursting at the seams with traffic, with traffic control, with these other things. I would love to make sure that they can get eight cars in there if that is the case. Um, I don't know how the eight cars would get back out on the street with the speed limit that is exceeded constantly around that bend. But those are our main concerns and what is our recourse as residents? Just, God forbid, I understand your intentions are good. We understand that. But if you can't and all of a sudden, things are blowing out of proportion. Do we call the police? Who do we call? We don't want to be those neighbors, but it's being pushed upon us now as, as residents that we have to deal with this more and more. So if there is a recourse, I'd like to know what it is, uh, what the proper channel is, so I don't waste very important time of people that work in law enforcement and things like that. Uh, but it is a concern for me and I just needed to voice that here. And the, the existing neighbors in our immediate area feel the same way. I mean, it's, it's hard to get around the streets, so. Um, other than, I don't think I have anything else to say, but uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address us on this? Nobody online? I assume that the answer is the police would enforce.
Yeah, so um, i- if it's noise, yeah, the police would uh, for, from a nu- noise, uh, from a nuisance standpoint, it would be the police. Um, if there are issues with the conditions of the special permit um, that on the short-term rental, then it would be a zoning issue and that would be handled by our own zoning enforcement officer.
But I would think if they.
Yeah, if it's, if it's happening, most likely it's nuisance and it would be the police. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So if there are no other input, no other input from the public, we'll open it up to commission members. Let's start with you, Hal.
Amazingly, I don't think I have any questions about this. I think it's considering what else could be on that site if that house burned down and wasn't there. I think this is probably as, as good as it gets. Could have been an extension of any number of other things, so. I'm, kudos for taking it on and I think uh, it's exactly the right place. Once those cars are in there, the reason it's there is that it's walking distance into Mystic. So I think once those cars are parked, they're there for the weekend or for the week. So that part is, is terrific. So I have, uh, it will be a problem backing those cars out onto the road, but not an impossibility. It's, it'll be a, a problem, but such is the nature of the village. So I'm, I'm, I'm good.
All right.
Uh, my concern is the parking. I don't understand how that's gonna work at all. Seems like there's too many cars in a too small an area.
Can I just add on to that? Cause I can't tell by the diagram how wide or how long that is.
So um, how, how public a parking lot is?
Correct.
On that print, I believe. I believe it's thirty-five feet wide by sixty feet long.
I guess the question, are those regulation spots?
Yeah, so what we have here is we, we have, uh, I've been a builder in Connecticut for fifty-three years. And I deal a lot with parking and all kinds of stuff. So what we have here is this whole uh, part of Mystic is large. And so there's a lot of water washing down through here. So we had to very carefully, we designed the driveway to go exactly the way that the paving was. Then we put two buffers to cut the sheet runoff of water. One is gravel, one is grass. So our parking extends all the way up to our, our um, area where we did all the landscape and we put the trees in as a buffer. So uh, you know, I will park eight cars there tomorrow and you are all welcome to come by. I have a small car collection. I'll park them all there, but there's plenty of room. You know, I've had, my crew has been working there for a year. We've had like ten trucks in there as we were doing the work. So, you know, it's, it's not an issue. You know, average, an average garage is twenty-four feet wide, right? That's a two-car garage, it's twenty-four feet. This is thirty-five feet wide. So there's no problem with three cars. An average uh, uh, garage depth is twenty-six feet. We have sixty-five feet.
Sixty or sixty-five, sorry.
Excuse me?
You said sixty before, are you sixty or sixty?
Thirty-five by sixty.
That would be a two-car garage.
No, a two-car garage.
A which car garage?
A two-car garage is twenty-four by twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay, so we have our pavement stops at sixty-five and we go all the way up to our buffer zone right here for parking. So there's no problem for the eight cars in there.
I should mention too, like on a site plan for a uh, parking space is usually eight by eighteen. So if you multiply it out like that, then you'll have enough, you have enough depth to put three cars deep.
Eight, eight by eighteen?
Eight by eighteen, yeah.
But I think that's against the curb. It's car either side. We go to nine, but, but, so it's nine.
Nine, yes.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah. So.
So anyway, the parking area extends beyond the paving is my point. We, we go into the gravel area, which we use for cheap runoff. So it absorbs the water when it rains, so you don't get all that water running down the street. And uh, so that's what we've done here.
So going back to the requirement, how many is it required?
They're required to have seven. It's one per bedroom. They have, they're showing they have eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we all, uh?
It's still Michael.
No, that's it. That was my, that's my issue is that I, you know, having the cars stacked in there like that and my, and my, people are, and that's a really bad intersection. There's visibility in both directions is poor. Cars drive too fast coming down Elm Street.
May I address that?
Uh, I'm speaking now and then uh, the uh, uh, there, there's gonna be, if that person in the front wants to get out, two cars are gonna be backing into the road, blocking the road. It just seems like a accident waiting to happen. That's all.
So.
Um, yeah, I guess I didn't understand. Um, and I'm sorry I dropped my whole zoning regulations, so. Yeah, I have mostly memorized, dog. Um, I, owner occupied isn't part of this?
No.
No, no.
Because it's a.
It's an MDD.
In the MDD, correct, yeah.
So I just wanted to ask, cause that solves a noise problem. Like I think according to the neighbors in the Spicer Mansion, it was a similar thing where you could have a lot of people and a lot of events. And yet I might understand, that's worked very well, um, because it is owner occupied. I, and I really worry, I hear the neighbors on that and the parking to me looks uh, pretty amazingly cramped. And I know that area is very difficult to get in and out. So I, I do have a concern with the parking and I have a big concern with the noise. Especially because you get that many people together. Um, it's not gonna be quiet, I don't think. I mean, so. Those are my problems, but.
Okay. Um, owner occupied, but don't we still have the regulation where they have to be the legal resident?
No.
Not in this.
Not in this.
You could put a hotel here.
Yeah.
Hotel is allowed in the MDD district. It's the MDD district.
Yeah, okay.
Right on the.
All right. So almost considering this as, as a commercial, it's a commercial uh.
It's a commercial.
Yeah. All right. Well, that takes, you know, a big chunk of concerns away, cause I know it's a tough intersection. They show eight, it's gonna be seven, but I mean, how many times, there's probably one in and one out, you know, by the time they walk downtown. So I, I don't, I don't, I know it's a tough, but I mean, it's a parking, you know, anybody pulling out of their driveway has a concern. You know, whether it's one car or many cars, but I don't think it's gonna be a fleet of cars all going at once. I just, just don't see that. We'll see after the first accident though. Now, I think that's all I got for now. Might have.
Okay, so um, the issue I have is when we did um Spicer's Mansion, which is now called Captain's Mansion, as I understand it. We, and it's, it's an analogous situation. I understand it doesn't equate fully, right? But the owner occupied is very big and one of the reasons was in the back was of course considered a patio and a fireplace, right? And um, the neighbors um, complained at that time is that had been a troubling aspect of the neighborhood. And, and I'm paraphrasing that, right? So tonight, what we heard though, was that in a patio, how they intend to mitigate that is simply say, within the Airbnb regulation nine thirty and not have bachelor red or bachelor parties. So my point was it's something we can't control, I guess, right? We, we can't regulate it past the point we're saying now. But I'd love to hear at least a public rebuttal from the applicant to basically say, is that it? I mean, is, is, is that it? I mean, that you're gonna try to regulate it through Airbnb um, as far as noise on that back patio?
Well, absolutely. And as I mentioned, you are five minutes away, so we're gonna monitor.
So it's a different question.
Okay.
So the, the question is, okay, you're five minutes away on the patio itself.
Yeah.
Is your only um, ability to reduce that noise um, to regulate it within Airbnb regulations?
That is, as far as I know, now, mind you, if it were a single-family home that were built there and it had seven bedrooms, you would be having the exact same issue. And it would be someone's single-family home with soccer parties and it, the fact is what is problematic, I think, is that people are used to envisioning this as being a vacant lot. So of course, there's gonna be more activity than it's a vacant lot. But it's a, it's a beautiful monument to the community and it is being used very gently and it, with reverence to the community. And that's where we feel very strongly that we could, we are committed to it. And we are, there are zero events and the Spicer Mansion is an entirely different kettle of, kettle of wax.
Why do you say that?
Because they were throwing weddings there with no parking at all.
But it's speakeasy.
And a speakeasy, I mean, that, that was a, it was, it was a hotel and a restaurant with events.
So you're saying it's not analogous?
Absolutely not. And it's not in a residential neighborhood. It's more of a, a commercial. I mean, we could have really put a restaurant there. You know?
That's not your application though.
That's correct, just for an Airbnb. But what I'm saying is we're not hosting events there. We're not having uh, uh, parties there. We're not even allowing pets.
If I, if I could just make a point on the parking, uh, Martine brought up the fact if it was a residence, I grew up with a big family, I had four brothers. We all had cars at the same time, sports, everything else. Can you imagine a family of seven or eight, nine, ten people living there? There'd be even more to do. That's, you know, so we'd still have the parking issue, number one.
Correct. I was just asking about.
Yeah, but also number two, I doubt very much we're gonna rent, every time we rent it, there's gonna be fourteen people there. I think that we already have friends that are interested. They're coming up three people, four people. Sure. So I mean, if it, you know, it's.
And if we're limiting the noise to before nine thirty and to be, to be clear, quiet zone appreciated. And this is not a flop house. It's very well-appointed.
We, we're just asking about the noise. That's all I'm asking.
If, if there were, if there were a family there, you couldn't say, don't have your soccer party there because it's noisy.
We, we have put a, a fortune into this house and it's the last thing I want to see is much kids tearing what I spent two years doing.
You bet.
That's not happening.
And I'm sure it's not, no, so.
No, it's not cheap.
You're not gonna get a bunch of.
We're not.
College kids in there.
No, you're not. You know, matter of fact, we're putting an age stipulation on the thing too, so. We, I, the last thing I want is a bunch of twenty-one-year-old, you know, uh, fraternity brothers in there, so. Um, but uh, what was my other point?
That was it. I, I just, I asked that about the noise. I'm fine. That's every bottle, I got it.
Right. As far as the uh, backing out, uh, when we did the landscaping, we actually trimmed back the hedges on the eastern end of the driveway. So if you go slowly, you can actually see uh, the driveway thing. And if people pay attention to the speed limit, they're probably, it's only twenty miles an hour. So, you know, well, I know they don't, but what if they do? You know, we, you know, yeah, so.
We're good. I'm, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I'd like to thank the applicants for going above and beyond where they could in terms of um building a beautiful thing where they could have taken shortcuts elsewhere. Um, adding to the community, I believe, my opinion. And of course, joining our community, even though it wasn't a requirement for this district um, in their, their choice of, of coming down to Mystic. Um, as far as the noise goes, I hear the concern completely. Um, really, that's not something that we can handle here. We can ask for all the consideration by applicants, commercial, residential, any kind of applicant. But that's, that's a larger issue, I think, on the townwide. Um, so I think those are my only points. Thanks.
Want to do it? We'll follow.
Yes.
Just because it was, the issue was raised, we want to make sure it were clear is that the, the comparison to saying you could have put a single-family home there with seven people. We've been all through that with short-term rental and that is not analogous. The difference is those people would live there three hundred sixty-five days a year. With short-term rental, they come and they're going. And if you don't let them live there again, they don't care because they go someplace else. So that's the difference with a short-term rental. So we do that. And the other part is that whatever we approve right now, will be there forevermore. So you're wonderful. You're gonna keep it exactly the way it is, what we put in place now. The next owners and the owners after that and their grandchildren will be under the same regulations and we can only enforce what we can enforce. So that's the, that's the concern here.
Right. I just have a question for staff. If we approve this special permit, can we put a time limit on this, say five years?
Yeah.
Yeah. Like we do for Whittles, which I got picked on.
And and to require a renewal.
Every.
Next years, you have done that on other operations.
I think that was one of the reasons why we made it a special permit. So we could put that stipulation, I think I remember.
Yeah, sometimes we do three years.
Yeah, right, and is it only a year term, or is it also an ownership issue?
No, not ownership.
That's my question.
Not, thank you.
Special permit goes with property.
Right. When uh, uh, Napa can suggest that they're gonna use Airbnb. Is that a requirement? So they don't have to use that?
No, we all define things.
Oh, I, I was, I guess it was a rhetorical question here. Um. I mean, it doesn't, and the nine thirty noise, is that something that is? In our regulations?
No.
No.
Not, so that we're just.
Well, ten o'clock is, so yes, yeah.
For this kind of a.
For patios.
For patios, yeah.
Yeah.
So they're going a little beyond.
The applicant is right, beat that time.
Yes, I mean, I would.
I would, I mean, if we can do the three-year or something like that, that would be something that would. Probably. Ease my concerns.
Does anyone need any additional information?
Just, do we have to write that into the special permit?
Yeah.
Nine thirty. And if we put a time limit on that? And I might wanna ask the applicant.
You can't.
No, not the.
You can't do the nine.
Time limit is in this regulation.
But the three.
I mean, ten o'clock is in the regulation.
Right.
That's, that's good.
They will stipulate nine thirty.
Oh, they can be, yeah, they just can't exceed it.
But the idea with the three-year, the they would use with others, um, is that this would be like a test period. And then the next one, they need to have five or more or something like that. It's not trying to be a punitive.
Yeah, just for history, this is brand new for us and we just wrote the regulations, we're kinda walking before we run.
Does anyone have anything else?
I also wanna mention, we we are planning to have an open house and I'd love to go over the panels and see what we've done and what we are doing. Hopefully. Um. And we're, 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 we're. Remind each other, any of that.
Does anybody wanna add anything else? On this line?
Again, ask one question.
Yes.
About parking, is there any kind of standard, is there any kind of, uh, Elizabeth, that's too far, Rachel, is there any kind of um? Standard measurement for parking space?
Yes.
Yes.
And that is?
Eight by eighteen.
Eight by eighteen, okay.
Actually, not nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen.
Yep.
Like this or in a row?
I think it goes to, when it's on a curb goes twenty-four, but so it's twenty-four deep if you're gonna stack them up like that.
Uh huh.
For twenty-four, 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 nine foot wide.
Okay. Thanks.
So. Suppose since there's conference going up, I might mention about the parking was that. Like every couple of years, every year I use this, some kind of America, this kind of situation where there's not enough parking packed into a space, but. We arrive with six cars. And. Four of them stay put for the, for the rest of the week.
And then you got one run.
And you got one or two that are.
But I mean, I just like imagine this, so we're supposed to have seven parking spaces, just if. It was only nine feet wide and then there were seven cars stacked in a row. I mean, it gets to a point where, I mean, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing three cars stacked up. I mean, it's just like, if you had that, I mean, I know what the rule is.
Right.
Seven cars, but if they're stacked in a line like this and six cars have to back out to let the first guy out. We're gonna have a problem.
Yeah.
They're gonna have a.
Well, no, it's. Blocking all of downtown Mystic.
Honestly, typically, the first guy doesn't get out.
Yeah.
They're all there together, so the last three cars become the cars.
Or they talk the guys that can get out, you're driving.
Absolutely.
That's how.
Didn't that got?
And you're gonna find another parking place at Mystic, so.
I guess it's in this area between what is residential and what is commercial.
This is commercial.
Yeah.
Always, wow.
And you wouldn't normally allow parking like that in a commercial. Business.
No, no. Well, that's not true, because um, when someone's parking their car, you hand the keys over to somebody to park your car, like that, valley parking is that.
Yeah. Okay.
Good. Good question for one.
Procedural question for staff. Um, after this, are we seeing, if this moves forward, are we seeing anything on this property again? As admission?
Uh, anything than other one, then no, nothing else, no.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions? So there's no reason to hold a public hearing, open. I gather.
Close it.
Hmm, so I'll make a motion to close. Public hearing for uh Spec twenty-four zero zero six. Smooth and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will vote on the motion and close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda is uh. Consideration of public hearings. First one is. S U B twenty-four zero 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 two Summers. Re-subdivision.
Oh, pardon me, does everyone have a copy of the?
And we have uh. We were emailed. Some. Draft motions. For this, I don't know if everybody's seen.
I have.
Does anyone have any questions on? Proposed. Motions. Hearing none, I'll make a. Start going, going down them one at a time. Motion to approve, this is all for subdivision twenty-four zero 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 two Summers three subdivision. Motion to approve a request for a waiver of section four point five. Hearing one of the subdivision regulations to eliminate the requirement to connect. To a public water supply. Findings. The commission finds that while the site is located less than one thousand feet from the existing service lines. For the water district. For it should be for the Noink Water District. Hmm, cuz it's not.
Yep, we can do that.
Hmm, cuz this is not in the one, Noink Water District, right? This subdivision is not located within the exclusive service area of that district. And Noink Water has no plans to extend service. To the subject property in the near future. Is there a second?
Second.
This requires. Three quarters majority.
Yes.
Does anyone have any comments, questions on this? We'll vote on this. Motion for the waiver for. Water, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next motion is to approve a request. For a waiver of section four point eight eight. Of the subdivision regulations to eliminate the requirement. Provide underground utilities to the subject property. Findings, the commission finds that both the main house and cottage are currently served. By overhead power lines and no. Utility connections are required.
Got it.
I did change. Opposed to recording. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Vote on then the motion for waiving the power line. Connection, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion. Is carried unanimously. Motion to approve the re-subdivision of the land of Mark Summers eight fifty is known as eight forty-eight Noink Road. With the following modifications, one. In accordance with section four point nine five, a payment. In lieu of open space of eighty-five thousand dollars, the equivalent of ten percent of the fair market value. Of the land prior to subdivision. Shall be made prior to recording. The final plans. Two. All necessary final and signed easements and common drive maintenance agreement documents are provided to staff. Prior to the recording of the final plans. Three, any modification to this plan imposed by another federal, state, or local agency. Shall require additional. Review by town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate. Or all technical items raised by staff. Shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I just wanna go on record and say that I think that. The intent of uh the payment was not for a single property.
It is. Was.
Then regulations.
Yeah.
It starts another big discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Changing regulations.
Yet the applicant embraced section four dot nine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's okay.
Right, hearing no, no other items for discussion. So I'll vote on approval of the. Re-subdivision of eight fifty Noink Road, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Motion to approve the coastal site plan application. C S P twenty-four zero 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 three based upon the following findings. The commission hereby finds that this application is modified is consistent with all applicable goals and policies. The C G S twenty-two A dash ninety-two and incorporates all reasonable measures which would mitigate adverse. Impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources. And on existing and future water-dependent activities. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will vote on the motion to approve the cam, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Luck with that.
Thank you for your investment in Brock.
Your father-in-law will be happy now. Huh? Huh? Now he has an eight, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of land plus the building.
Yeah.
That's the first. Worst. Appraisal I've ever seen was more than what I thought it should be. Usually.
Yeah, usually they.
Usually. They went up twenty-five minutes last year. Hmm? So your Hawaiian shirt's working tonight.
See?
Following your bosses.
Yeah.
We. Okay. Now down to regular business items. We have approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more public, uh, the consideration of of the of the public hearing for the special permit.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Missed that. Yeah, the special permit, twenty-four zero 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 six, yeah.
Um, so I know you all have a draft motion, um, I did. Knowing that this might happen, um, I did pull some draft language um from some of the past ones and I I wanna hand this over to you, Mr. Chairman, just to take a look at if this would potentially work for that.
You wanted just to change that?
Yep. Let's see what I change.
All that.
Well, it kind of addresses. You can do what you want with this.
This is what we have like on the.
Yep.
Well, what he's proposing. Well, I don't know if you wanna read it or. It would be a motion. This, I'm not making a motion, sorry, I say to add, it would add after the first sentence of the, or add what's. Typed up on your motion, say subject to the following conditions. One, special permit number twenty-four zero zero six shall be subject to re. No, every, however many years we wanna use, commencing from the date of the initial approval, permit renewal shall be administered through the planning. In zoning commission's review of a special permit application. It's similar, I guess, to what.
Yes, correct.
What we use for the. Little property, does that make sense to people?
Yeah.
So then the only. Thing we would have to decide is what timeframe we wanna use, three years, five years?
Let's start with three and then go up.
Three? Well, we just use as, but this is three and then. The next time we could change it.
Whatever.
And we just check in their health.
This follows the one, three, five.
Or if the room is full of. You know.
No, we don't know.
Yeah, no, we know, yeah.
This is the first short-term rental that we, that we've ever approved.
Okay.
And it's a little unique in that it's not in a residential.
Right.
Area too. Maybe we'll have annoying someone else.
Well, no.
Does that make? It seems to make sense. So then I'll make a motion to approve a special permit twenty-four zero 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 six. Airbnb short-term rental, one Noink Road will allow for a short-term rental within the M D D, subject to the following condition. One, special permit twenty-four zero zero six shall be subject to renewal every three years, commencing from the date of the initial approval. Permit renewal shall be administered through the planning and zoning commission's review of a special permit application. Is there a second?
Um, just one question, is, does that require?
A second.
Oh, second.
For discussion, a second for discussion. Second for discussion.
Yeah, okay, now you can discuss.
Um. Does the special permit? In the future requires a hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, cuz it's a special program application, it would, yeah. Okay, that's, that was um. I believe the thought behind it, because then we could hear.
Right.
If this is a problem.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, that's why the, it's a special. Application.
Okay. And cuz we had. Okay.
I noticed that cuz the first time planning and zoning commission got merged, we got Whittles.
Yeah, that's right.
First one.
Yeah.
In fact, a couple of weeks ago, I don't know, something, their stand, I got picked on. I'm one of the guys. Oh, I recognize you. Alright, so smooth and seconded. Approve. Approve with the. The three limit renewal. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this?
Uh, no, I just wanna say I I believe that the applicant did provide a rebuttal, maybe not what we wanted on a patio, but he provided a very appropriate rebuttal, so thank you.
Okay. So we'll vote on uh. On the motion. Or to approve special permit twenty-four zero zero six, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
That's good.
That's good.
We'll take that in.
Good luck with your. Well, they're gonna be ups and downs. Always is. Hmm? Alright. Okay, next, uh, we're going to back to our regular business, retain approval of minutes of. Previous meetings. First one. Hmm. We have two minute meetings, minutes, one is October eighth, I'll entertain them, a motion for approval of the minutes of uh. October eighth.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, does anyone have any corrections? This. I have a couple of minor editorial. Items on page two. Down in the. Section uh. Eight point one, second paragraph. On uh, second sentence. It says there will no light, I think it shall be no, to be, could you say, isn't it, I think inserted. And in the next paragraph. On there, um. On the last sentence, on the. Next to bottom line there, it says driveway entrance due to the inability reached, I think it's a to reach, that's my head, just minor stuff. So if nobody has anything. So if nobody has anything else, or correction, we'll vote on them. Will, approval of the October eighth minutes is modified, all or amended. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, any extensions, motion is carried unanimously. And we have the minutes of October twenty second, I'll entertain a motion. For approval of the minutes. So is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, anybody have any corrections? I just had. Couple of minor items on the first page, under approval of minutes of previous meetings. He says the minutes will be on the agenda for the next. Next meeting for approval, I don't know if you need to actually add that, or if you do, you ought to say why. And just say inadvertently not included, or some in the package. Or just leave the whole thing out, I don't care. And under, on page three, under all business. On section nine one, draft meeting schedule revised, I think we ought to say why took. To either correct or to revise. Due to room availability, or what one of us revised, the November meeting due to. Meeting availability, or something into that. And under new applications. That first one, staff informed the commission. Do you need that sentence in there, I'd take it all out, otherwise you'd have to say why. I, it's just a normal way of doing business, that was just provided as a information. Anyone have anything else? Vote on approval of the minutes of October twenty second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, any extensions, motion is carried unanimously. Public communications, does anyone have? Public communications, you see, does staff have any, does anyone in the public wish to address this? On anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, then moving on to site plans. SIT twenty four zero zero fourteen, Ace Overhead Door. Eleven fifty nine, Paquonic Road. The applicant. See online or is it?
Assuming it's still in the presentation.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great, how are, how are y'all? Uh, for the record, my name is Ed Wenke, I'm a professional engineer. Are you seeing my live video or you seeing a picture?
Not seeing any.
We're just seeing a picture of you at. That's good.
There we go. You can see me, you can hear me.
Yes.
We can walk, talk, and dance, okay, great. Thank you, thank you for, uh, for accommodating me on the Zoom. Um, I, I, I had a bit of an accident about three months ago. And I just got my cast off and I'm just starting to learn to walk again, so I couldn't, I couldn't fly up to attend this meeting in person. So I really appreciate you accommodating me on this. Uh, as I said, I'm a professional engineer, been working in southeastern Connecticut for over forty five years. Uh, so I, I got an awful lot of experience in, in Groton, which was my hometown. Excuse me, we're here tonight representing Ace Overhead Door. Uh, for a site located at eleven fifty nine, uh, Paquonic Road. And I want to share my screen here. Just as I'm talking, you tell me when we got it right. Share that. Can you see it?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah, that's the aerial shot of, uh, of the site itself. So just to give you a, a quick, for instance, of what we, what we've got. The site itself is about one point three acres, it's outlined in red here. It's located on Paquonic Road, it's route one, it's located about three hundred feet from the intersection of Buddington Road. Uh, that's the spot right there, this is the Groton Regency, pretty easy to find. Uh, the site itself has been vacant and, uh, there's, there's no current uses there at all. Uh, there's an existing house, it's located right in the center. It's an, uh, the house is dating back circa nineteen, uh, seventeen sixty one. Uh, we had checked on that, it's not on the historical register, which kind of blows me away, but it's not. Uh, so there, there's no, there's no historical restrictions on this. There's some miscellaneous outbuildings, there's a, there's a, uh, mobile home here, it's not on a permanent foundation. There's a couple of outbuilding sheds, and then there's a garage here. There's a paved portion here, and then there's an existing driveway that goes out onto, uh, onto route one. So the site is located in the MVC mixed use village district. And it's also located in the CAM zone, it's on the outer fringes of the CAM zone, obviously without waterfront. Uh, we're now located in the Water Resource Protection District, but not located within five hundred feet of any other municipality. And, uh, we're in flood zone X, so area of minimal flooding, so none of these issues are, are issues. Uh, there's no tidal wetlands, there's no freshwater wetlands. And there's no coastal, you know, coastal flood hazard areas, obviously, for wave action or limwas. So all in all, this is a pretty straightforward site. Uh, what we're proposing to do on this site is to, uh. Basically, we're going to raise and remove the existing house and all of these outbuildings except for this garage. What we'd like to do, and I'm going to change my map here. We are proposing to build a new commercial building on this site. Now, this is a loud use, the commercial building will measure hundred and eighteen feet by forty five feet, it'll be single story. It's going to be a prefab metal building. Uh, and the use inside is going to be split up between a retail section. The retail components, about thirteen hundred and fifty square feet in the front, which basically is along the street frontage. There'll be an office mezzanine in this area that's about four hundred and ninety five square feet. And then the rear portion of the building is going to be all for storage of the product that's being sold. The business itself is Ace Overhead Door. Ace Overhead Door is a commercial business that, that basically retail sales. Uh, overhead doors and installs them. So this is going to be their main center of operations here. Um, so the proposed building meets all zoning criteria, the lot itself meets all zoning criteria. We're not looking for any variances or any, any issues regarding zoning bulk criteria. We have existing water and sewer that currently come off of, uh, Paquonic Road. That go to that existing historic building, those, uh, services have been obviously cut and discontinued. We're going to be connecting back to those services for this building. This building's water and sewer use are really minimal, and there's certainly plenty in adequate capacity for both. In the, in the trunk lines that are in Paquonic Road. Uh, we're going to be bringing underground electric utilities and communication utilities to this, to the building from, uh. From the pole out on the front. We are going to be providing a paved parking area. Now, we, we tried to approach the design on this thing, keeping in mind, uh. Low impact development and best management practices for storm drainage, stormwater quality, and basically try to minimize. Our runoff and impacts of the runoff. So what we've done is, the parking count for these uses, as it's broken down. Is nine spaces required, that's the absolute minimum based on your zoning regs. We're providing nine spaces. Along with that, we're providing, uh, the necessary EV, uh, charging stations and the make ready charging stations. And, uh, pardon me, but I'm still not clear on how all that stuff is calculated, because it's kind of ambiguous. But the, uh, town staff has been working with me on that. At this, at this time, these plans are showing that we are providing, uh, two. Uh, EV level two EV charging stations, but at the handicap, uh, parking space and at this parking space. And we're providing, on this plan, we're showing additional three make ready spaces, which I think is overkill, I think. We only need one make ready space. These are minor details, but we are providing what is necessary by your regulation. Excuse me. The driveway coming into the, uh, parking lot is basically the same location as the existing driveway. Going to change plans just real quick here. To go back to. This is the existing. Conditions, this is the house we're going to remove, you'll see this is driveway that already exists. It goes out to, uh, Paquonic Road. The, the location of the driveway is perfect, site distances are perfect. We're not going to change that, we are going to modify the driveway, make it a little wider and change the radiuses for truck turning movements. But we're not cutting any new curb cuts out onto, uh, out onto route one. In addition, as a side note, as I said, this whole area here is existing pavement. We're taking that pavement out and changing it over to crushed stone, in the spirit of trying to reduce the amount of impervious surface on this site. All of these outbuildings are going to be gone, except for this outbuilding garage, which, uh, the owner's going to use for additional storage. Of miscellaneous, miscellaneous things, it's, it's really, it's, it's a minor issue, but that's an outbuilding that's going to remain. So getting back to our game plan for the proposed site. Excuse me, as I said, we've got nine spaces, we've got five in the front, one handicap, we got four on the side. We've tucked the, uh, enclosed trash in the back of the building. Um, and we've got, uh, a, uh, pedestrian crosswalk, we're going to be doing a little bit of sidewalk in the front. Sidewalk work in the front, and we want to talk about the sidewalk along the frontage. Currently, right now, the site has an existing blacktop sidewalk. It runs the full frontage of the site, and it's continuous all the way up and down route one. It's in fairly decent shape, and I'm going to show you a picture of that right now. This is the sidewalk. You can see this is good, this is going up to, um, up to where Groton Regency is, looking north, this is the existing driveway. And. That's going south. So you can see this is totally usable, it's in good shape, we want to keep this for right now, uh, but. With a little bit of modifications, getting back to. This plan right here. So we've got a sidewalk coming along the front of our building, which is going to provide pedestrian access from the street line. Into the site, which is part of the MVC criteria, they're trying to get a walking village type feel. Uh, and we can talk about that a little bit more in a second, but we're going to have the sidewalk coming out onto the street. We're going to have a new five foot wide concrete sidewalk to the new improved driveway access. Which again is at the same location as the existing one. We're going to come across the driveway with a pedestrian crossing, we're proposing a stamped concrete. Crossing to make it look a little bit more villagie, uh, and then coming back with a handicap ramp and another section of five foot wide sidewalk. So all in all, we've got about, I think the number is about two hundred and thirty linear feet of. Existing blacktop sidewalk, of which we're replacing with this scenario, about sixty six feet of it. So we, we're replacing about, I think it comes out to about thirty percent of the, of the sidewalk. As part of this proposal, we would like to maintain the existing by two minutes, the remaining existing by two minutes sidewalk for now. Uh, so we're asking for a formal, I don't know if you call it a waiver, but I, I did, uh, you know, speaking with Bryce this morning. He asked me to write a letter requesting a postponement of the full improvements of that sidewalk. For a future date, and the future date is. Being married to the development of the rear parcel here. This property, I know I'm going in, um. Different directions here for a second, but just bear with me. This is the original survey of the site. Our subject site is this right here, but when we first started, the site was one whole big piece. Uh, early this year, we were able to do a free split lot division, creating a rear lot back here. This rear lot currently has deeded access for driveway out to route one, that this all makes it street legal. We're going to provide a new access coming through our driveway to access this rear parcel as part of our site plan. But be that as it may, the rear lot itself right now, there's no plans for it right this second. But there are various uses that can be put back there that are totally compatible with the MVC zone, MVC zone. So, getting back to the sidewalk. We postpone section of sidewalk replacement here and section of sidewalk replacement here, to when this gets constructed. This development will then replace the rest of those sidewalks. The reason why this has even become an issue is because we're basically running into budget issues on the job, and we're trying to. Find places where we can cut upfront initial out of the gate costs. This was, it's a minor issue, but it's pennies on the dollar, and every penny counts these days. So we're respectfully requesting postponement of the, you know. Whatever comes out to, I think it's sixty, seventy percent of the length of that, uh, existing blacktop. Let it stay as it is right now, it's currently in good shape, it's being used all the time. You saw the pictures of it, it's, you know, it's, it's not, uh, it's not a hazard. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't present any kind of safety issues, or, you know, it's adversely affect the welfare of any, any of the public that's going to use it. This is not like I'm asking, oh, please don't let us do a sidewalk, and there's no sidewalk there. There is a sidewalk there, and it's been being used for a long time, you're saying, let's leave it there until we finish off the back of this property, we'll come back. And finish off the rest of the sidewalk. So that's my sidewalk spiel for the, the project, but I want, I did want to talk about that. Uh, so we can be clear on that. Uh, as I said, water and sewer is not an issue, storm drainage on this site was, was, was also a little fun. So our storm drainage system on the site, currently, there's really no pipe storm drainage system. In Paquonic Road, close enough to the site that we could tie into, and even if we did, we'd have to really. Go through the gamut of getting DOT approval to do that, because that's a DOT system. So we're looking at the site, we're looking at how the site grades, and we came up with a solution again. Looking at this thing in terms of LID low impact, you know, development. To basically inject all of our storm drainage, one hundred percent of it. We're going to recharge the groundwater, one hundred percent of the storm drainage. Doing this with infiltration chambers, I know you're all familiar with the, the concept and the, the system. Uh, our roof drainage is going into a separate system along the back. And it's a series of basically concrete chambers. And then the parking lot pavement area and all the area here that drains down, she flows to it, is all going into a infiltration system in the front. Under the pavement, and again, concrete, um, excuse, concrete galleys. Because that's going to be where the traffic is going to be flowing. Prior to discharge for the paved areas, we're putting in a storm scepter, which is an oil grid separator, I'm sure most of you are familiar with that. Technology, um, but that, that's been sized to, to handle all the storms we've designed for and give you a ninety percent. Total suspended solid removal. So we've addressed, adequately addressed the water quality issue before it's injected into the ground. But more importantly, these injection systems, when you design these. You really technically have to have an overflow on these for emergency. When the storms hit, you know, pass a twenty five year storm, this thing fills up, where does the water go? You normally have to have some kind of overflow and then tie that into a storm drain system. But as I said before, we don't have a storm drain system to tie this into. So what we did is we sized these, these chambers, basically, all the way up through a hundred year storm. Uh, so it's a little, it's a little overkill on this, but it basically will take all of the storm, one hundred percent of all the storms. That are ever going to happen on this, aside from the five hundred year storm, and keep it on the site. And keep it on the site. And I know that, you know, storm drainage in a lot of towns, a lot of areas down by me. Is is a real issue these days because people are getting much more rain than everybody. Thought they'd be getting normally. And a lot of these storm drain systems that are being designed for the five, ten, twenty five year storms. Are not working. So this thing is not going to, it's not going to pose any problems, any storm that mother nature can throw at it. Which is a good thing. Uh so and so there's no storm drainage leaving the site. Hence, I've got zero increase. Uh in peak flow. On any boundary on the site. Nothing leaves the site. So we've we've met the the zero peak flow mitigation, we've met the water quality issues. I think the storm drain system is actually pretty darn good on this. So that's how we handled that. Um. We walk you through. The building itself. Because there'll be a little discussion on that. See which one I've got here. This is it right here. Okay, as I mentioned to you before, the building measures forty five by hundred and eighteen, it is a prefab metal building. Great length and uh. A lot of discussions gone, you know, the owners had great discussions with their building designers, the building manufacturer. Try to get this building to look as as pleasing as possible from the outside. I know that there's also the issues of the guidelines. With the M V C of how you had all envisioned. Buildings in the M V C to look from a frontage standpoint. Just give me a second, I want to walk you around the building. These uh and and I and I don't want you to lock into any signage on this. The building designer kind of took the liberty and put signage in there to make it. Make it look good, but and it does, but it's not necessarily the signage you're going to be seeing. This is a a picture from the south side. Driveway going out to Route one. So you can see the three loading bays we've got here and this is the storage area right here. Handicap parking here, we've got a few more spaces. There'll be a few more employee spaces here. This is again, that same side, the south side, looking at it dead on, there's some windows here. Retail section is up in this section. The mezzanine is up in this section. And all the storage is all in the back. Uh this is the north wall. This is kind of what's facing. The um the driveway going into the Grotton Regency, but that's. Few hundred feet away. But this is basically the the backside, so there's there's really not a whole lot going on on that. This is the enclosure for the dumpster. This is a great shot right here, because this is a rendering of the floor plan, the interior floor plan. Of what we're trying to build. In here, you can see obviously the storage area, this is. These are service vehicles, they'll be parked in there, whatever, but. They're going to be, this place is going to be loaded with garage door inventory. Um this is the mezzanine section up above. And then the retail section down below. But I want you to take note of how the interior walls. Of the retail section are. This is not a a convenience store selling, you know, racks of candy bars and things, this is. A retail store selling garage doors and they're pretty large. So all of their displays are going to be wall hung. They're going to be covering a lot of wall area, wall areas are premium for the interior of this retail space. This is what's driving the window placement in the exterior walls. And I just wanted you to be aware of that. This is kind of how this whole thing has been going. So this this floor plan really does tell a great story. And then we go back to. Up 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 the front. So. Again, if you can envision yourself inside that retail, we're going to have garage doors and sample, you know, placards across this wall. Across this wall, the sidewalls are going to have. The garage doors hanging on the inside. These windows were placed above that. So we can get natural daylight in, but also to break up the front. They also went to the the extent of breaking up the front facade. With the stone uh veneer knee wall. It comes up along, be about four foot high. Widen out the door as much as possible with two side lights on either side. So we're trying to get as much glazing in here as possible. And the building also has, uh I think it's an eight or nine foot overhang. So the roof extends out. And and basically covers, it's like a big porch. So this is what's going to be facing the street. Stone wall you're seeing right there is the existing stone wall that's out there, we're going to try to maintain that. Um. You know, going across and obviously it's going to be landscaped as well. So um. That's 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 what I've got for the bill, you can see the porch right here. Um. So I think I've hit on all the major points here. Now, Tom and Amanda Lubicek are the applicants. Also the property owners and the owners of the business. Uh I believe they're in the audience. I believe they should be in the audience. They said they were going to be there in person because I couldn't be. So they're they're there, if you have any specific questions regarding their business. And you know how they plan on going about doing things. Uh and I'm here to answer any of your other questions. Regarding the technicalities of the site.
Do you have anything to add? No, okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm.
What was that?
No, I said, I'm 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 all done on my presentation, but I'm reluctant to answer any questions.
So to turn it over to Steph.
Sure, yeah, so. As as Ed went over the the properties uh result of that free split. So uh that free split resulted in a parcel, the subject parcel that is under two acres, so no public space needs to be provided. Um. The E V conversation, I've had conversations with Ed, Ed, uh if you recall. We're going to be able to reduce the make ready spots, um I think. Yeah, so there'll be one make ready spot, two, two live E V spots, one of which will be ADA accessible as well. Um. Lights, so. The applicant's actually providing one freestanding light over by that concrete um walkway up to the building. Um so in an attempt to comply with the design guidelines in that way. Um parking design obviously is off to the side. Um as required by the M V C. Um the renderings, I just wanted to make a note of that, so the landscaping and all that, the the freestanding lights you see in the parking lot, that's not actually accurate. Um refer to the site plan. Obviously, uh most of the lighting provided on site are uh those security wall packs, which I think are shown there. Um so.
That's that's generally the idea of what they're, what they're accomplishing with that.
Yep, um.
Right time use either. So that that would be security biting.
Uh the applicant's also providing stamped concrete um crosswalk. Uh in front of the site uh and bike racks that comply with design guidelines. Uh trash and utilities are going to be screened. Um of course, Ed went over the postponement of the sidewalk improvements, there are. Um I think, as you said, around thirty percent of the sidewalk will meet that five foot width, the remaining um little over sixty percent. Um is. Will be uh postponed until that that rear parcel. Uh will be developed.
That's pretty, pretty exact, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um easements are in place uh to access that rear parcel, so there's some forethought in that. The fire marshal and our building official both looked at the building design, um. They're generally okay with it, but until they can really review it, um they're not sure necessarily about the mezzanine, if they'll. Necess necessitate another means of egress, so that's still um kind of in the works. Um. Other than that, yeah, just um as as Ed went over, um and I think you might see in the draft motion that we provided. Um a potential. Um modification with respect to that storefront, I didn't know how the commission would. Take uh the storefront with those design guidelines, with those um. With those ground elevation guidelines around glazing, obviously Ed and the applicants have. Have explained kind of some of the limitations um of that retail component. Um in in providing those those windowed areas at the ground elevation. Um of course, there might be some, because it's a pre manufactured building, there might be some structural limitations there as well, but I wanted to at least. Provide that to the commission if they felt that was necessary, if not, totally fine. Um but because there is some uh wiggle room, I suppose there, um I wanted to provide that because of course. Going forward, uh a village feel, um. You know, obviously, a lot of effort's been made to make that pedestrian friendly, though it is set back uh a little bit off the road as well. Um. But I think with that, uh that's that's about all I have, yeah.
Yeah, I'll open up to the commissioners, if they have any thoughts, questions, start with you, Hal.
Start with me.
You're number one.
Where do I begin? Let me go to the good stuff, the pedestrian connections, that looks great, let's like, let's see. Where where it gets to, yeah, I'd rather it just actually walked from the. Front to the. Front door, but it makes sense for it to come onto the side. Though having the front door squarely in the middle where nothing is. There's no parking in front of that front door, the walkways into the front door, so it's. It's a kind of a random design in terms of internal. But all of the parking is. Not handy to the front door. You know, the front door is on the wrong side, it's facing forward. Um. So I'm not sure why, I I know why it happened, because what I'm looking at is something that came out of a catalog. This is a pre manufactured building catalog kind of cut. Uh and I'm honestly not convinced in any way that this meets the guidelines, this meets anything that we were looking for in the village field. It's supposed to have some actual interest to it, some changes of the of the roof line, some uh different kinds of uh. Protruding elements or something going on around the doors. This to me is a slightly. Dressed up light industrial building with the commercial in front. So as kind of a baseline, I'm very interested to see what everyone else has to say about this, but. I don't think this meets our guidelines at all, is what we would like to see on here. It's geared as much for the three trucks. That are. It's not really entirely. All storage, it it serves having three trucks inside, because that's the way it's shown in there. So this is as much a garage for these trucks as anything else. So, no, I I don't see this as meeting the guidelines, I think the. The fact that it's a pre manufactured building does not preclude doing that, because you can do lots of things with a pre manufactured building. An enormous number of things you can do, but none of them are done here except for that. Kind of nice looking porch thing on the front, but I'm not going to go too much on just the appearance of how those windows have been punched in. Uh we use the term storefront, by the way, is. That gets confused because architecturally storefront is a storefront system is glass. And here, now all we're talking about is. The double doors with side lights. Where it doesn't even make any sense to have double doors, because you're not going to have lots of people going in and out, it's going to be one or two people. Mostly contractors going in and out of that door on the. That they're walking around to, so there's not much about this that makes sense to me, and certainly not the village feel. Um. Getting to the, just stepping down to the little details for the the lighting. Didn't say much about this, but it just said, yes, it's just going to have these security wall packs. It's it's specifically what we don't want to see, and security wall packs are ones that are not shielded or just go. They're Walmart specials and no, it's got to be, everything has to be full cutoff, that provides plenty of security if they're a nice high. It's. There's no. Good excuse to have un- unshaded. Uh light going horizontally. Uh. What was I going to say here? With regard to the sidewalk, um. Not improving the whole thing, I I think I'm okay with it. The sidewalk is there, it's heavily used. Doesn't seem to be a problem the way it is, it would be nice to improve it though. Uh when you'd get around to improving the back lot. Might not be in our lifetimes, so I I I don't want to necessarily tie it to that. But I wouldn't mind saying that doesn't need to happen right away, but I would like to put a a time limit on it, so we can say. It must be done in three or five years, or when the back lot is developed, whichever comes first, I'd be in favor of that. And for a technical thing, I'm just not sure, where does light industrial start and commercial end? And it's just, I'm kind of lost on that, because this, to me, I if I saw this building happen on our light industrial area, I'd say two thumbs up, looks terrific. And it's appropriate. Here it's. Sort of that gray area where.
So so it's the retail component that makes it allowed use in the M V C.
Because it's got a retail component.
Yeah, so and. If you.
Regardless of size or percentage of size, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and if you don't mind, Ed, could you? Elaborate on those wall packs, I believe you said those were full cutoff, but could you? Yeah.
Okay, the wall packs are full cutoff in there. There'll be, there'll be um. I I guess they'll be either photocell uh activated or motion activated. Um but they are full cutoffs, anti glare. I I mean, we've we've used them on a lot of buildings.
Okay, well, well typically I expected, and we've heard those from you too, but as shown on the building and was mentioned, I hear security. Uh wall packs and what was shown on the elevations. Didn't show it that way, so that's.
I think that was a little bit architectural license. Building designer.
And I got a comment on what you showed us, so.
Yeah.
And I think that's all I've got. I think that's. That's all for me.
Um I had also uh. With the sidewalk, I would, uh I had written down here. The rear development or five year review. Um. Just to make sure that that is done, because sometimes these things language. Um. I I'm not an architect, but I kind of don't think that it has that.
Well, look at the guideline.
Village feel to it, um. I don't know if the building could be turned or it would make a difference, or if there's another way to make the front look a little. Less like a. Store or something that's just. Very. Non-descript.
Michael, if I can interject, please, because we do have a thing saying building form for this kind of. Yeah, in the zone and it specifies. All buildings with facades longer than forty feet must articulate the facade with varied roof lines. Bunnings, arcades, pilasters, columns, recess spaces. So. None of that's evident here, except for.
If you look at the appendix. A lot more detail.
Yeah.
It doesn't support.
It doesn't support. Sorry.
No, 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 I'm glad that, no, that's what I I need you here. That's all, thank you.
So.
You know, in the same comments. It seems like some of the recent buildings we've approved, um. We're not, I mean, architecturally, I guess, once there's. Built, it's not looking like. Um the concept we wanted, and this one in particular in that area. Um. Not to go crazy on it, but I'm sure hopefully some things you can do to make it really fit with the guidelines, which I think are pretty clear, same. Um right now, it's just to me, it's just like another big box. That's all I had.
Yeah, aesthetics notwithstanding, I did have a question about. Did you say all of the? The driveway is going to be non-pervious?
No, uh no, I, what I said was the existing driveway. And we'll go back to that right now. This is the aerial shot of the existing conditions. This existing blacktop driveway that accesses. The back garage and the house. This is all going to be removed and changed over to uh across stone. So this will be impervious. But the new driveway for the site itself. Where the parking is, this will all be blacktop.
Okay. Alright, so like the the rendering shows?
Uh the rendering is, again, it's a little. Little off on. Yeah, we don't have parking on this side. We only have parking here. The driveway is coming straight back. This is the crushstone going up to to the uh garage. And uh. Yeah, and the pavement does come around the back here. But this parking doesn't exist and these these light poles don't exist either. Uh regarding light poles as well. We're under ten spaces, so technically we're we're not even required, we're exempt. From providing actual site lighting. Uh so you know, light poles. Uh and originally we started out, we weren't going to, we weren't going to put any in. We were just going to do the wall pack. Uh nighttime security lighting. But after talking with Bryce. We decided to put one lamp, one lamppost in right here on the corner. Which is pretty much where most of the pedestrian action is going to happen anyway, if it happens at all, through that sidewalk. So there will there will be the one light pole. That we're putting in, the rest of it's going to be the wall pack system, and again, not necessarily what you're seeing here. This was architectural license, as I said.
And you don't have any? Shots? Rendering the, from the street? What you would see to the building?
Yeah, yeah, this would be. Yeah, wait, be one second, there you go.
Yeah, that's kind of an area.
I'm sorry?
I mean, you know, at, at street level.
Oh, at street level.
That's all right.
I think that's the best, the best we got, yeah.
That's best.
And let's, if you're twenty feet tall.
Yeah, that's all, I'm. I don't have anything.
Yeah, so I, I felt the same way, just from first impressions, but Hal and then Michael spoke to. But then Hal brought it back to some precision as far as what we have written in there, and I agree with that. Um, the only other question I had is when Ed, you were talking about the stamped concrete, you just mentioned handicap access. I didn't know if that was a special metal piece you have in there, or what was that?
No, 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 handicap uh handicap ramps are standard for the driveway crossing. Um, and I just mentioned that because that's part of the sidewalk improvements that we're doing. Right, cap ramp, handicap ramp here, you have handicap ramp there, that's all the concrete work. But this is part of the frontage concrete work. For that, um. There it is.
I got, that's it, that's it. I just didn't know what you're referring to, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Share.
Lauren.
Hal captured pretty much everything, right? Um, my concern would be. If this is hinging primarily on it being a retail space, shouldn't that be the more emphasized in the plan? It, I, I'm hesitant just because what stops a similar development from sticking a cash register in the corner and calling it a retail space? Right? Um, and there is a lot of pedestrian action in that area. Will that pedestrian action turn into um visits to the retail space? Unlikely given the kind of pedestrian action that's occurring there. However, what, what guidance or limitations do we have on how far away? They have, they are allowed to be from the sidewalk under these new design guidelines? I don't know if that's something staff can, can answer.
So setbacks have a maximum here? And they are within the minimum and maximum for this zoning district, I believe. Ed, you come in at maybe thirty to thirty-two feet and the maximum is thirty-five.
Okay.
So they're within that, that maximum setback.
Understood. Is there anything on the design that requires direct access as opposed to doing this kind of side around shuffle?
Are you referring to the parking?
I, I'm referring to the fact that if I was a pedestrian, I'd have to go all the way around that stone wall almost to their parking lot.
That stone wall, Ed, is that part of the rendering that isn't accurately shown on the, the site plan? I don't believe that stone ball.
Okay.
Will. Disc. There, there.
Can't exist there.
But there's the access from the sidewalk through.
The grass.
All the way up to the storefront.
Well, to the side and then you have to kind of enter. I mean, it doesn't go from the front door to the sidewalk is the point. It goes up to the side of the building.
Correct.
Right? And there's no side access where the parking spaces are. You have to go around to the front. That doesn't connect anything.
You're basically, you're going to be parking here, you're going to dogleg and come underneath the canopy to get into the front. You know, obviously, we're not allowed to park in front of the building, all the parking is relegated to the side. And we're trying to still create a frontage, you know, a frontage elevation facing the street that has a main entrance. So, so there's no other way to do it. The, the main entrance is driven here because of the, of the regulations. And, and you know, direction we were getting also from staff, saying that the front entrance has got to be basically facing the street. I mean, we could, you know, certainly, we have a doorway here on this side accessing into the storage area here. Which by the way, is not really garage, it truly is storage. Uh, I think the vehicles were in there just to show where the garage base were. But um, there, there's a doorway that enters in here. I mean, can, can the floor plan be worked out so we can get an entrance from this parking? Certainly, but I don't think we're really gaining anything by that.
Yeah, I, I, I think the concern is the fact that your front entrance doesn't connect to the sidewalk, which is kind of the intention of having.
It does, it does, I don't, I don't understand what you're saying.
Not, not directly, but okay, thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, I just. Sort of came to the conclusions that Hal had. When you read Appendix C. You want to have a storefront that's accessible to, to the sidewalk, so people walking by can see it. You're not going to have people walking by this place to go buy a garage door. There, you're going to have that as a destination. This thing would be ideal if it were put on the back section of their subdivided land. It would fit right in there, but not in the front. The front should have a storefront that sells retail goods to people that are walking by. And this does not meet that criteria. That's what it says with the intent is of Appendix C. So I, I just, I don't see how we can approve this application.
But yet, but yet the retail use.
It's not retail you, it's just only retailing the few people that are going to buy a garage door. And they're not going to be the ones that are walking by.
I don't know, I don't argue that point, I, I agree, but to the letter of the regulations, it still does meet.
If you look at Appendix C, it says, do this, don't do that. And this is one of those that.
And I will note that prior to reviewing this, this application, we did get a. Decision from our zoning official that this did fit retail and therefore did fit the zoning district.
It doesn't meet what the intent is, it says this is the intent.
But are we evaluating the use?
Yes.
The regulations don't specify what type of retail they're providing retail.
Well, they are implying that.
I, I agree, but I think your point is more directly addressed by the design guidelines.
Yes.
And by the regulations.
Yes, by the design guidelines.
Right. Um, so I think the options here, Chris, where are we with timing?
The twenty-eighth is sixty-five days, so.
November.
Yes, so I've included in my staff summary kind of the options we can take, right? If a decision isn't rendered tonight, that being either a special meeting scheduled before the twenty-eighth. Or the applicant would have to request an extension um of that sixty-five days uh to um. You know, gather and revise um for another meeting.
But did you mention that, excuse me, did you mention that the town zoning official gave guidance to the applicant? And said that this was.
Only on the use, because the use, only on the use.
So that should be a, a noted, no more discussion on that, the use is fine.
Right, it's whether, again, again, it's whether or not the structure and the architectural design and the design of the site. Meet the regulations of the MPC and whether they address the guidelines. The guidelines are just as their guidelines, right? They're not regulations. Um, but, but the applicant knows that they need to look to those um in order to inform the design of the building and the design of the site. Everything in the regulations section of regulation that we have to abide by them.
Was there anything in the package about what the zoning enforcement officer?
I didn't, I didn't include that, the, the decision, no. Um, certainly follow up.
I think it's really important to do that, because in the past we've had, I mean, it's been a while since we had major issues.
Yeah.
But sometimes it surprises about rulings or decisions.
I, I thought we were supposed to get, be informed.
This was done quite a long time ago, it was before.
This goes back several years ago where we started having some real problems.
And I'll just note in my. I'll, I'll just note in my staff summary, I did specify that the retail component is the reason why this is allowed. Um, I apologize again for not including the email correspondence um that kind of ruled on that. Um, but again, uh, I think that dated back to maybe the previous official, yeah. Yeah, so it's been, it's been a bit, certainly before I started.
You just came.
I could just interject on that. That correspondence from, from the zoning official is what prompted the applicant to move forward with this. It was kind of like part of our, you know, vetting out this property to see if we could actually do this, this use. So we got that information from the zoning official, that's why they moved forward with it.
Right, but again, that, the fact that you have retail there, I don't think is necessarily the concern, it is the design of that retail.
That, that I understand.
We, we discussed this uh at length. Um, while reviewing the design guidelines versus the regulations of the, the district. Right? And I think a lot of issues tonight are in regards to those guidelines. Which it's the discretion of the commission to decide upon how they want to enforce those guidelines and what they want to see.
Well, with all due respect, I'd really love to have ample opportunity to work with my clients to address. The, the looks of this building to meet those guidelines as much as possible, come back to you without this being. Uh, basically denied tonight, I would like an extension on this. I think my clients would agree with that, that they can like on this.
Yeah, an extension.
They're nodding, so, so we'll need that in writing before the, the twenty-eighth.
No problem, you'll have it tomorrow morning.
And, and we need, as part of that extension, what that extension is asking for, um, time wise, how many days? You need that extended. Choose sixty-five as the max, they can choose if they want to go short.
We should ask for sixty-five, just, we might get a blizzard or something.
Well, you're heading into the holidays and all that. Just so I'm clear as I'm walking away from this, the, the, the marching orders. For what I want, what I need to look at and work with the clients with is basically the front elevation. The, the use is not an issue, correct?
Just the front.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
I'm hearing, I'm hearing.
It's just not the front, just the front, it's the front and the sides. According to the guidelines, it's, it's the building. Because the front, because the size.
Articulation, we're looking for the front to, to bring that village feel in.
Right.
But, but again, just to be clear, we're not questioning the retail use.
No, no, we, we're not fond of it, but it, it's legal.
I understand, I understand.
And, and since you mentioned it before, just is that you say we're all agreement that the entrance has to be on the front? Nobody said it had to be in the center of the front. It could be on the left side of the front.
I understand, that, that's, that'll be part of that whole architectural massing part of it, that it's got to be worked on. But I appreciate the input, I truly do. And, and we've worked hard on this and, and Bryce is, we've talked about these issues too with Bryce. Um, so just none of this is really a hundred percent new. But um, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come back to you. And uh, let's see if we can address this and, and hammer it out.
Alright.
Thank you.
So we'll continue this. Hey, old business, we have.
We stopped your share.
Oh, it's hard.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody, thank you. We all done?
Yep, all good.
Have a good night, thank you.
We have no old business, no business, we have no applications. Sutton Park Hotel Conversion 3 Gravel Street. It's just similar to what we had before, but it's all telling. That's used to be an insurance office.
That's correct, Rover Insurance, that's right.
Multi family, multi-family residential development and. We have zoning regulation amendment discussion.
Correct.
Which, I don't, why, are you going, you wanted to lead us or just sit down and join us at the table?
You can do it either way.
Well, I would consider this an informal.
Right, that's exactly right.
It's informal.
Informal discussion.
No business decisions.
Deny next time.
It's non-binding. It's non-binding.
We had a little bit of a handout with some attachments that aren't, not in any particular order, but I think they might be all for discussion purposes, something.
Thank you, Bill.
Well, I want to thank you um for having me here tonight. Again, Bill Sweeney with T doors in New London. And I'm appearing tonight on the behalf of the, of the Downs Patterson Corporation, which has requested this informal workshop. With you regarding a possible minor modification to the permitted uses allowed in your mixed use industrial district, or otherwise known as your IM district. And joining me tonight in the audience, Mark Wolman, uh, one of the principals of Downs Patterson, uh, is joining, is here as well. Um, as Deb indicated, this is an informal, non-binding, pre-application discussion. Uh, and that's allowed by the Connecticut general statutes, anything you say, you're not held to. Uh, but it's really an opportunity in our general statutes for applicants before they submit to come in and have a discussion with, with the commission about an idea or a concept. And hopefully help them refine their proposal to address issues upfront and before you actually get into the hearing process. Um, so our goal tonight is to sort of share a concept that we have. Um, and in that concept is allowing the IM district to truly be a mixed use district. Uh, and permit multifamily residential uses within it. Um, we hope to get your suggestions, your comments, I hope it's a candid, open discussion. And it certainly want to try to incorporate your feelings on the topic. Um, as you may be aware, um, and I think it's shown on the second and third pages of my handout. Um, the Downs Patterson Corporation owns approximately a hundred and forty acres of land. Um, which is vacant, it's located north of Exeter eighty-eight on I ninety-five. Um, easterly of Route one seventeen, and this is just north of the Mystic Marriott Hotel and Spa. Uh, the vast majority of this land, um, that's owned by my client is located within the IM district. And it's remained undeveloped for many, many years. Uh, there are approximately a hundred additional acres owned by other parties. Uh, on that side of one seventeen that are also, that's also vacant, it's underutilized. And if you look throughout the IM district, and I've given you a map of it. Uh, the IM district goes all the way to the east to Flanders Road and is the Mystic Business Park. Um, there are several hundred of additional acres that again are vacant, uh, underutilized, uh, basically sitting, um, uh, undeveloped and have been for a long time. Like most parcels within the IM district, uh, my client's property has development constraints. Uh, there are areas of wetlands, there is flood plain, there are steep slopes, there's shallow depths to bed rock soils. And, and that really will create, as you can imagine, um, some uh challenges for. What a lot of people would think of prototypical sort of homogeneous, uh, large scale industrial development, sort of something like the classic industrial park type development. Um, my client, Mr. Wolman and his other, the other principals of Downs Patterson. Has been working to market and to develop their site now, um, for typical industrial uses allowed under the regulations. Uh, but the challenging site conditions combined with limited utility infrastructure. And also I think decades of soft demand for industrial uses uh has really presented a significant obstacle to them. Um, however, recently there has been interest by parties uh in um at least portions of this property. Uh, for utilizing it for multifamily residential development. Um, the IM district that you have set up in your zoning code claims to be a mixed use district. And permits a wide variety of commercial and industrial uses, along with a sort of a smattering and assorted mix of some other sort of unusual uses like restaurants. Um, or even single family and two family dwellings, that's allowed in the IM, but multifamily or multi-unit dwellings are not. And that is somewhat bizarre, at least from our perspective. Uh, we don't know if that was an intentional decision, or maybe it was an unforeseen, you know, an unintentional oversight. But a mixed use zone in, in mixed use zone that does not allow a multi-unit development, I think is very unusual. It's not typically what you would expect in sort of modern zoning regulations. Um, if you look, and I included the, the page of about the IM district in my package. Very purpose of the IM district is to accommodate lower impact industrial uses in proximity to residences. Um, to attract both modern manufacturers and their employees. And the regulation talks about sort of mixed use neighborhoods in the surrounding area, but if you look at the zoning map, there's really nothing. But if you look at the zoning map, there's really nothing there or even zoned appropriately to, to um provide that, that type of housing. You have single-family to the east and the south, and you've got a lot of conservation lands to the west and the north. Uh, so it doesn't seem to really, there seems to be some kind of a problem with the zone, I think, as it's constructed. We think a better approach would be to allow employees that were trying to attract to businesses that, that in, in this zone. To actually live adjacent to the places they work. Uh, now, in the distant past, I would a- agree that uh residential development was typically excluded out of industrial zones. That's sort of basically Clidian zoning. We put the industrial in one place, the commercial in one place, and the residence, residences, you know, elsewhere. Uh, but I think mo- in recent years, I think we all realize sort of the problems with that type of approach. And many communities actually recognize the value of having people live next to the places they, they work. It minimizes vehicular travel. You don't have to drive in your car and go miles to work. You can walk, bike. Um, you know, even I know over at electric, near electric boat um in New London, we have people skateboarding to work. So there's opportunities for people living right next to the places they, they work. And it really can um create some very interesting mixed-use developments on a larger scale. Um, in fact, I'm working in a couple towns right now in Connecticut, going back and rewriting their zoning regulations, working Rocky Hill. Just got it approved um uh about a month and a half ago. Rocky Hill is taking all of its office park zones. And now allowing housing for the first time as a way to reinvigorate those, those sort of aged-out sort of vacant um business parks. Um, so my client uh approached your staff and approached Deb um to discuss the potential of a very narrowly designed targeted text amendment. To uh the use table in your zoning regulations that would permit multi-unit dwellings in the IM district as a conditional use. Um, based on that discussion, it was, it was shared with us that this commission has been wrestling with the regional demand for housing. The need for um uh more multi-unit development in town, particularly for workforce housing. Um, and, and you might be inclined to consider this type of a targeted text amendment. Uh, and like I said, our proposal would be very simple, and, and I've included in my package the use table. Uh, and I highlighted where we have an X in multi-unit development. Our, our proposed change would simply to be make that a C. Uh, in the table uh right there. And um it would, it would be very similar to how you already permit one and two-family. Um, uh residential units in the same zone. Um, beyond the fact that this is a mixed-use zone and mixed-use zones should universally, in my opinion, permit some form of multifamily uses. I think there are other reasons why, why this is a good policy and something that the commission should consider. Um, I provided you some maps of the IM zone. Uh, it encompasses about eleven hundred acres of land between along I ninety-five. Um, but only about half of that land is readily depth-developable for site constraints. I've included a GIS map with topography and wetlands uh on it as well. Um, you can see that there is constraints to much of the district. And then all large blocks of land that were easily built upon, things like the hotel site, the site where the Peabody Health Center was built. Um, the um, the Mystic Business Park um at the far end of the eastern end of the, the, uh district. The transfer station and the landfill, these parts of the, the zone are already developed. What I'm really looking at are what's not developed in the zone. And these are areas where the. Developable land is actually broken up into smaller tracks in, in, in sort of smaller pods of usable land. And um these smaller areas are often adjacent to uh resource areas, like my client's property. Um, they may also be in the Water Protection District, which is Water Resource Protection District, which is also uh my client's land. And in from my perspective, you know, as a planner first and then later an attorney. Um, I don't think that a lot of these properties are actually really suited for large-scale industrial development. But they are probably very well-suited for smaller-scale industrial uses. And they're very well-positioned for targeted residential communities that could be mixed in with those industrial uses as part of mixed-use projects. Housing has become such a critical need here in the Groton area. I know I included a page from your most recent housing study. Uh, updates with the executive summary. Um, I think that update says that there's a deficit of sixty-five hundred units of housing in this area. Uh, this is a major concern for the future economic viability of Southeastern Connecticut. Um, towns like New London and Groton have realized the value of capturing these workers. And making them residents to keep their disposable income into, in the community. Um, but other towns have not been that welcoming. And quite frankly, we're not even close. The matching or achieving that sixty-five hundred number anytime in the near future. So the need to identify new housing opportunity sites has never been so pressing. The modest text amendment we were proposing would create significant new opportunities for targeted multifamily projects in your IM district. Um, and, and we think it would be a way to keep the newcomers that are coming into the region with the electric boat expansion, keep them here in Groton. And so make sure that they spend their money in local businesses, um and not don't go out into the suburbs. They stay here, which I think has been a, a major policy. Um, concern of this town for now several years. Further, I think I would also add that recently, local citizens have come out against larger-scale industrial projects. On IM district property, uh including projects like the data center project. They got a lot of opposition to it. Um, I think it's a great idea to add the multi-unit dwellings in as a use. Because that promotes a, a greater variety of less intense development options. And housing particularly has much less um minimal, it has much less environmental impact, in my opinion. Than some of these larger-scale, huge impervious parking lots, huge impervious buildings. Modern housing can do a lot of interesting and um creative things to be able to provide much more environmentally sensitive uh development. Your future land use map, which I think is at the end of the packet, shows for public trail systems to be developed throughout the IM district. Uh, I think that's something that would be much easier to do and more compatible development to develop with. Residential housing developments scattered through the area, trails linking different housing developments to each other. And to adjacent conservation lands, which was quite a bit on the outskirts of the IM district. Another reason why I think this use should be considered. And I think, and finally, I think the approach we, we've selected. A text amendment rather than going in and sort of rezoning the IM district or taking parts of the IM district out. I think is the most appropriate way because it doesn't require wholesale rezoning. It doesn't undermine the integrity of the existing IM zone. It doesn't foreclose out the possibility of smaller industrial projects that are fit into the, into the sites. Um, that are available. And I think it's, it's a great way to promote what is truly mixed-use development, which is what the zone claims to be. Um, so that's basically my, my spiel for tonight. I wanted just to share it with you. If, if this was something that you were interested in entertaining, we would put together a text amendment application just to modify the use table. Um, and um that would be our approach, but we wanted to come and share with you our idea before we went ahead and did that, just to get some feedback from you.
Did, did staff have any input or do they desire before we open it up to the?
Not, not really. Um, this is based on actually commission discussion of the Affordable Housing Plan. Sue, I think it was you who suggested, why don't we just allow housing in this zone? Um, and then just by chance, I had the opportunity to talk to, to Mark Wolman about it and told him that. You know, you might be interested in that sort of thing and. If he is, you know, we would get to it eventually. Um, but if he's interested in it now, um. Probably a better opportunity to, to go ahead and make that application himself. Um, no, it's definitely something we've talked about um internally.
Well, I'll open it up to commissioners. I thought it might be good if we first heard from our ex zoning. Representatives of Steve and Sue and why, why it's not allowed today.
Yeah, we, we plead the uh.
How far does it go back? I'm just sorry.
No, I, I didn't mean it. Wondered if you.
Well, the P O C D says you should review it too.
Probably more than a thirty. Not always IM, but it was zoned industrial.
It was IP eighty. Like two different IP eighty districts.
Really a carryover from.
The plan of development, obviously, you're gonna be working on your new plan of development soon, but the two thousand sixteen plan. Talks about the need to diversify uses within the district and it doesn't go, I, you know, all honesty, it doesn't go as far as to say. Allow multi-unit housing, but it does say like there are other uses that should be considered, and it talks about restaurants which are now in. Um, so the idea was is that these should not be sort of sterile industrial centers, but they should have. Sort of some level of vibrancy and activity. And right now, in modern time. What we're seeing is this push toward, hey, if there's a piece of property that's not suitable for a large-scale industrial development. Why not put up some condominiums? Why not put up some apartments? As, as a lower intensity development option in those areas that pay taxes and provide worker housing.
But I think that's in our P O C D, review industrial zone location, uses and standards. So I think that's uh, it's like the green light to uh do all this.
So you, you think it was just inherited?
Yes, it was.
It changed things, but it's always been.
Right, and added a few uses with the two thousand and nineteen amendments, but didn't go as far to add housing.
Right, but then it was, it was a very different world there too.
But we've, we've had a couple zones that, you know, we had great plans for, like around the subbase. Um, you know, when that was kind of a zone that says, oh, we wanna have it, uh, you know. Sub-oriented and, you know, it just never did it.
What you mean the northwest?
Yeah, northwest district.
I think I, I would also, I wouldn't, I would re- reiterate something that I think is really important is. Typically, in my experience, in industrial zones, industrial zones often on old farmland, they're flat. There's not a lot of slope. There's not a lot of shallow depths to better houses. They're sort of easy sort of open plates to develop. That's not this zone, you know. And so there are parts of this zone, like the Mystic, uh, the best part of the zone for that. Is the, where the Mystic Business Park is. It's perfect. It's flat and it's, it's generally, you know, level and you don't have a lot of the issues you have in the rest of the zone. For that reason though, the nature of your district, I wouldn't undo the industrial zoning. I would just create a little bit more flexibility. Because it should, you should allow for sites that just don't make sense for the traditional industrial development. You could do, for example, you know, what you couldn't, wh- what you can't do now is for instance, a small incubator project, which are getting to be popular again. With some housing in addition to it, or, you know, um.
But let's, yeah, let's talk some more about maybe some of our instruments too. Cause I know that land pretty well, that area around there, and it's uh, it isn't just that somehow somebody ended up with industrial zoning on a difficult area. Cause most of Groton's pretty difficult, I mean, real, if you look at it. That's why, yeah, there are a lot of flat, easy places, but I do believe they have sewer up there, right at the corner.
So there's sewer at the hotel and it extends up some distance up the road, but it does not go all the way up to the center of Groton. Like it doesn't go all the way.
I know that, but it doesn't it to the Downs Patterson property.
It's right to, right south of that, right to the south.
And then a hosting property, for example, doesn't have that.
Correct.
That's really. It's almost a different animal, but I would just say for starters, one thing I think is really important because you do have different situations. And maybe different goals. If we should really talk to all of these, your landlords, and not to drag this on. But give them the chance, well, what are your ideas? What do you want? And at least hear that. And even if you look at the industrial zone, there's a lot of housing because it goes up Hazel and Hill Road is industrial and zone, you know.
Yeah, that whole neighborhood is, is sort of included in that.
But um I think the other thing, you know, I won't talk forever, but, but the other thing is really like to know. What your real stretch, you know, your goal would be. If you could do whatever you want to do with that land. For examples, to maximize uh your return from it and do what you think would be the best possible thing. Let's forget about talking about single-family houses or something. What would be your big, I mean, and given that so much of it is not developable or not very easily. Yeah, what would you, and maybe that's opportunity to put more open space there and then get the justification for more intense.
Well, that would make sense to take the, the part that's really difficult to develop on the east side. It's also up against that, the D E P land.
Right.
Like I think it's Campbellwood Hill and Lake Hall. So I mean, there's the opportunity to do that and then in the more developable portions to do multifamily housing. Um, Mark, I don't know if you wanted to just maybe chime in, I know you, you looked at some preliminary planning. For the site and give an idea. We're talking about a hundred and forty acres of land potentially, but you could give Sue maybe some perspective.
Been in the family and this company for many years, as everyone knows. And the town has invested a ton of money there, but never been in a drive, and of course that always would flourish. Um, you know, at one point we looked at, when Pfizer was looking for another campus. And we did some preliminary work, laying that out and phasing that. And, you know, that, next to Mystic Marriott, actually was an office building then. There's a pad there and that didn't lucky the materialize. So over time, the calls we've been getting is residential, you know, especially with the markets. You know, the housing is clearly, and. As you know, Paul has said, there's a ton of ups and downs on the property and at one point. At every Chevy way back. The, the Latin ball and back properties become golf course. All these dreams of what could be done there. It's a tough site.
Oh, sure.
I think there may be forty or sixty acres in the entrance.
Right.
If you could do something with, and if you could do it in small clusters. But, you know, at one point it was tied up for the dad's center.
Right.
The war that took place there and, you know, there was, I don't know how we have a lot.
Okay, well, that's really interesting. I know the Marriott, for example, that's a six-story building. Um, and we usually don't talk about six stories um and six, so that, you know, maybe you want something more. I'm always one of this. How about twenty? But, but it's like, what would be, what do you think could really fit in there? Um, cause you're not anywhere where there's gonna be a bunch of neighbors going, oh my gosh, don't do this.
Always neighbors that, that are, will come out and say, don't do this. That's the reality. No, it's, it's the area that's in uh orange that I. But, but that, but that, but that is an additional piece of property that's owned by a third party. It stretches all the way over to the, to the town landfill property. So that's a huge chunk of land right there.
So whatever amendment would impact all of the land in the IM.
Yeah, but what's gonna limit it is gonna be like in the southern part of it is the, you know, sewer. Right? You're not gonna be able to put apartments down there without sewer.
Well, you can.
Extending it. Well, there you go.
That's actually not true. I mean, so you can do community septic systems and you can do smaller scale development with septic. So I mean, I've done that in towns all over the place. You just can't build the same level of density without sewer. It's, the sewer gives you the ability to do several hundred units of, of housing.
Doesn't our, do our multifamily don't require sewer?
Why, why stop at multi-unit? Why not include all the other types of housing that are currently X off? Right, the uh active senior housing cottage communities.
Oh, absolutely.
The, the man right now is marketplaces for the multi-family unit. However, if, if the commission said, hey. Treat this like you treat, for instance, the CR zone, your commercial, regional commercial zone allows all of those, those residential uses. If you say, hey, I think if you find it treated like that, I mean, we can make the text amendment like that as well. Army or, or our, the, the, the ask that's been made of us is we wanna do multi, multi-unit dwelling development.
Well, anyways, you make as flexible as possible and as big as possible and then it gets to well, how much space you're gonna cover, probably not that much.
Yeah, I, I actually think, I think the regulations that, yeah, uh, designed here. Are some of the best regulations for multifamily anywhere that I work. And I say that because. All too often, I think towns try to put these arbitrary controls on development. And so the way she's laid out multifamily. Um, development in, in sort of your larger commercial zones is. It's really based on the carrying capacity of the land that you have, because for every building, you have to provide so much storage space. You need so much recreation area. If you're in the Water Resource Protection District, you need so much open space. You have so much parking. And so you almost, cause I've worked on a whole bunch of projects here in Groton, you almost back into how much development you can. When you lay in all the other regulations. And so it really plays to the carrying capacity of land. Certain properties where you've got good land and it's open, you can build more units, just like you should. When you have more constrained land, you're gonna face more challenges and. Uh, that is absolutely the right way to do it. And I think, I wish more towns did it. that is absolutely the right way to do it, and I think, I wish more towns did it that way, quite frankly.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, if you get the open space, which just provides that more intense.
This development ought to specify, say, a minimum amount of acres to be included in the development for the multi unit housing, like maybe three acres or five acres is a minimum.
That, and so that's exactly the kind of reason I'm here tonight, because there might be, you have footnotes and sometimes in your in your tables. Um, and and so there could be a requirement, you know, that we add in addition to the table, you could say in the I M zone, if you're going to do multi-unit dwelling development, you must have a minimum of ten acres.
Well, I think that's what we would be the hard part of writing this change, would you need a new paragraph? Or where the rules are for what kind of building, how high the buildings are.
I I mean, I think what you would do, if you know, and I would always defer to to Deb on this, but I would say you make it conditional and you refer to five one eight G, which is your multi- multi-unit dwelling development. You can add an additional sentence, in I M zones or I M districts, you must have a minimum of ten acres. You can add that as as something that just applies to that zone. But there might be a different way to do it, but there's, we can figure out the way to do it.
No, but I mean, that, yeah, I think.
If you think that's important, and 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 again, it's always arbitrary.
Well, yeah, yeah, but there there are regulations and now uh site height of buildings and stuff like that. And you'd have to know whether there's applied to this district or not, cause it I think the height in the industry, in the I M district is different than it is in some of the other districts that you were allowed to have.
It's six stories.
And to say, if that's okay, okay, I I'm not trying to say what it should be, I'm just saying we need to have.
I think it's, I think it's quite frankly, very similar to what you do in the C up, C R, the regional commercial, I think. I wanna say it's six stories in the regional commercial too.
Well, whatever, I I'm not trying to pick a number, I don't.
No, we have to be clear about that.
And that's where the difficulties of writing this change would be.
Yeah, I I would say, I mean, in my mind, we're fine with the multi-dimensional requirements of the I M district. What would be interesting is if you have specific things, if you said to me, hey, listen, I we love the idea of having multi-family, but we want some additional controls for for multi-unit development in the I M, and and maybe one of them is we don't want somebody to come in and do a multi-unit development on a two acre piece in the I M, we want you to have at least ten acres. Very common thing, I talked a little bit about Rocky Hill, so Rocky Hill, you gotta have fifteen acres even to apply for for it. So I mean, that's a very, very common thing that towns use when you do multi-family in certain zones that aren't quote-unquote multi-family, that minimum acre requirement.
Should have something.
Like a minimum bar.
Some they have twenty or twenty-five.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, I mean, there's, I think there's variety.
So um, so you've asked for a text amendment, you feel that's the easy path. What it doesn't do, right, it doesn't, maybe we're too stodgy on this, or maybe we're just relying on a framework. It doesn't go into our our um plan of conservation development. We could say, let's wait for that, we make these type of changes and it fits overall, or that's it, say, that could be our plan A, B is, why is our I M not in C R, right? Why don't we take our I M and put it into the C R?
Maybe what are the best possible places? I mean, what are the really good designs for a situation like this, where it's like you're almost in a valley there? You know, with all these rocky things, water and stuff, and yet you have all this demand, you know, for housing. So I'm using my voice, so what's really, what's the best idea, and I wouldn't just say, oh, let's go look at what we already have.
Right, or or we take it, I think so what you're saying is, or we take it as Bill suggests and say, let's get right to the point here. If you take your I M and you put multi-unit in, guys, it's not that hard.
If you change that X to a C.
No, but you have to specify.
Have we made a better town by doing?
I think we wanna get real.
I think Sue already addressed it, and so our P O C D requires us to have a continuous review of these sorts of things. So we are already.
And the housing issues that we had today were not, is, were not apparent in two thousand sixteen.
Well, let me ask a question, this is something that I find very different now in Groton and I spent twenty years in Stanford, that's where I really started working at, so. And there you could buy a condominium, you know, um maybe that's like your first house. You could, you know, make something on the condo, cause the market was good, then you could get your single family house, you know, or whatever. But it's like, here, so much of it is rentals, and some of the E B employees have said to me that gee, you know, um half of my take home goes into my rent. And you know, that does nothing for them, and it's like when I lived in Manhattan, half of my take home went to the studio apartment. So it was kinda like, I don't see people building things here and having ownership, you know, available. Other than maybe in New London or some.
Isn't the winding hollow development, isn't that condos?
It it is, and it was originally approved, they said, oh, it's gonna be apartments, and then they just changed, I mean, we don't, we don't regulate whether it's.
I know you can't regulate, but what what can we do to incentivize almost the fact that, yeah, that's really affordable.
You got two, yeah, you, so you have two issues there, one is housing cost and housing cost is driven absolutely by supply, we do not have enough housing, so everything's elevated, if we had enough housing, prices would be lower, there's no doubt about that. But the issue of ownership, I I I hear this all the time, well, we wanna promote ownership. Well, things have changed a lot demographically in this country. Um, young people are not, the young people at E B, and I know this because I've worked with a lot of developers who've met with E B workers, who've met with E B itself, they're not looking for homeownership, they have very transient lifestyles. They want things taken care of them, a lot of the apartment buildings that I I build are basically, and I I say this all all the time to people and they laugh. They're glorified dorms and houses with common areas and parking, new pets, pool tables, and big screen TVs. The world is changing, it's a completely different generation, and with the E B expansion, people who are coming in are young people. There's gonna be a lot of older people retiring who wanna stay here, it's really being driven by that demographic. So I think you're gonna see a lot of demand for rentals, and it's gonna continue, but I do think where possible, where you can provide something different. Diversify your housing portfolio, create some ownership oppor- uh opportunities here and there, that's a great thing.
No, a lot of young people really want that, and the thing is, it gets me here, it's as if we think that every employee is like entitled to live where they work. And I remember when I got my first house, cause it was the cheapest house I could afford. It was an hour and a half commute on the Long Island Railroad, I mean, it was prolific, right? So it's kinda like, but if we can get at least an ownership potential, some part of it. You keep your employees too.
Two different parts to this, though, so, cause where we really, really wanna put the dentist part is where it's already really the most dense. We know it wants to be on Route One, we know where downtown needs to be, and we wanna get that going, so this is the suburbs. And it's a suburb that we wanna put things, because we already have Center Groton there, that isn't nearly at its full capacity of what it could be, it's a terrific node that is not fully realized, it's gotta pizza place, it used to have a grocery store, it doesn't anymore.
It has no sewer.
It has no sewer.
Worked with the developers on that, and it's, it is the challenge, although I know Deb and her team are working on that issue even now.
If 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 the economic impetus is to put sewers in, then sewers would happen.
If I can just add to, so the concern of homeownership, I think some of that concern can be you know, met by opening up the uses, like Lauren mentioned, to single family, two-family cottage courts, diversifying the housing stock that way, so there's an opportunity for homeownership models. Even if the market's not demanding that now, right?
I think a lot of people rent because they don't have a choice, and it's not that they want to rent.
Isn't the townhouse model?
I was gonna say, so we're gonna talk specifics, not just statistics, as a young person employed at E B who uh has a friend living with me, because they haven't been able to find an apartment in this area for over a year. People wanna own, they just they can't, and people who do currently own don't wanna move, not only just because of the rates have been bad lately. Um, there's nowhere else they wanna go, they love being in Groton, so a a townhome, a condo, a single family home, um a duplex. Those can all be apartments that you can rent when the rental market is hot, but then they can also convert back into ownership options. And so what you can't do, you can't do that, though, with dorm-style apartments like we're seeing thrown up on Bank Street. Right, those don't lend themselves to ownership opportunities, the same way that duplexes, single family cottages. And my other point is, my concern with having all of these little satellite communities is that now we're driving up car dependency. And we're not building those um, those interconnected communities that I think have been aspired to, um and have been wanted by the changes in the demographics, right? Um, I'll say, I know um, he gonna, E B just colonized one of those open office parks right there. Um, right by where you're you're talking about, I think that'd be lovely, and and the types of folks that are in those office parks. They're not necessarily um the young engineers that are coming in to fill dorm-style apartments, those are, those are folks that are um mid-career looking to find roots, to sit down roots, um and and those are the kinds of office parks that they're gonna end up nearby.
Sounds to me, one thing you can do, though, is is rather than simply putting a C in that one thing, we could look at all the residential options from single family to multi-unit, to to even conversions, and put them, just like you do in the C R, and allow them all in the I M.
One unit and two unit are already. Oh, okay, but then the other thing that I was, and it's just a question, because you were speaking of a ten acre minimum. I mean, it seems like to make that ten acre minimum for a multi-unit uh and but then not for a two unit. I don't, I don't quite understand why you have that ten acre minimum, I mean, I'm just.
We were talking multi.
Yeah, I know, but it's.
Single family house.
I'd also be careful, because we're we're talking, we're all thinking, let's mix up things and have everything going, well, it's a great idea to mix offices and residential and and have them be transparent. Switch over your offices to residential, no more residential, put offices back in, I mean, that's that that's a perfect mix. It's happening in New York City, they're shooting all these things to residential, wonderful, it's tough to do, but it's worth doing. Same with a commercial, got too much commercial space, fine, turn them into have a mix of commercial and residential is the perfect thing, industrial, have to be way more careful. Because that's trucks and noise and a lot more nasty stuff. So to allow them to intermingle is not great, you still need to have them have something in this to keep them a little apart.
So so that that acreage requirement, would it's something that you would, would give, would you give the ability, if you had an acreage requirement, you know, you know, building ins or backing in, like we talked before about buffering? And making sure that you don't have buildings right on a property line, you have those separations.
Also, don't wanna have to go through the industrial area to get to the residential area.
Right.
You want their residential area in the front and the industrial behind, and some way for the resident, for the industrial to get around it.
Well, it's all light.
Still be light industrial, it's fine, but still be.
We don't have to put any industrial.
I don't think anybody would, uh, I don't, I I, doesn't seem like the light industrial is being built there.
That's true too.
And we had a difficult time even knowing what light industrial was when they added that.
I think it's, I think it's for us to define.
It's worthwhile to keep, though, because.
Oh, I'm not arguing that it's not worthwhile to keep, I just think that from, like, from a development perspective for Groton, it isn't working, what we're doing.
But but there is a value in banking land for future generations, when you, those uses may become necessary. All I'm suggesting is that, particularly in this zone, based on the constraints, let's provide a little bit of flexibility so that people like Mr. Wolman and his company might be able to get some productive use out of their land now. Doesn't foreclose those other opportunities in the future too, and that's why I think the text amendment is a better way to go and sort of a reworking of the whole zoning.
I don't think we wanna redo the zoning map. Your suggestion of just changing what we can do in the existing I M would be a a step.
Biting off a little bit.
But the issue is, so if you really look at our our matrix, right, so we have um what is it? Fourteen columns and we have nine rows, we have a hundred and twenty-six boxes of matrix, right? So for the moment, all we've done is circled one, and I think, you know, we're not that good. We're not gonna be able to say, just do what it wants, we need to make a little bit more wholesale change in the I M because we haven't had the growth up there, let's just not say we're that good, I'm gonna take that one and change it, change it to look more like C R, you know?
So I just wanna add to what you were saying, Michael, maybe not on this particular property that we're talking about, but in other areas in the I M, um there is development and there is demand.
Well, yeah, but he's got a water issue, though, right, doesn't he?
He does, he does, but but I'm just saying, there definitely isn't a demand for that.
Well, we see it on uh draw, on uh Leonard Drive, right? Very, very well received.
That's where this outdoor business. Should, that we were reviewing tonight, that's where that belongs.
I don't think there's any lots left down there.
Yeah, there's the Flanders Road development, whatever that's called. And that's, that's booming, it's the perfect incubator type business.
That is what is booming, is the incubator, that's the stuff that is.
Perfect.
We hear from like the Holsteins of the world and the other big owners and things, even the small owners, get people an opportunity, like in the short term. Maybe, I don't know how you wanna do it, but, because I think it's been very interesting and useful, and it'd be good that your if anybody else has some other concerns or ideas.
Well, the concern that was mentioned, that there's a heck of a lot of other stuff that can go in that same zone. And the last thing I would be, I mean, when you look at vehicle repair and uh fuel dealers and fuel storage. I mean, all these things can go in there, and I would hate to have a residential and then a transfer station, you know, it's.
Are constrained by the water. So they're not allowed, you know, if it's overlaid by that, so there's some constraints on that.
Understood, but I would bet
Yeah, it'd be nice to.
Almost a dollar that there are incompatible.
I think that goes to Hal's argument, is that if you're gonna allow, maybe just for multi- multi-unit dwelling. If you have some minimum acreage sizes, to make sure you have enough workable land to create those buffers, I think that's really the key. And so, like, with these, like these regulations do very well, they back into good development design because of some of the requirements that are are in, so, I mean, we could definitely take a look at that, I could work with Deb and Bryce and and Dave, and we could try to work on that together and come up with a a approach that would address that concern.
That'd be interesting.
That's probably, that's probably the way to go.
Conditions have to be revised or reviewed on on some of those uh residential uses.
Yeah, I think after coming up with it, you wanna play, you could do it yourself, do devil's advocate, okay, now, if I was going to be going for malicious compliance. What could I get away with using that thing, because someone will do that, and then we'll end up with the exact thing we didn't want. Because there's a new.
I call it the parade of horrible tests.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, like, you know, if if somebody was evil and wanted to use this in a bad way, what could happen? So I try to do that in most of my.
And so maybe, and maybe it's because this is a gift, a a a specific place, you could say, well, it can't be four acres. It's gotta be five, because that will preclude this bad thing happening, but you need to test it.
And typically, what I do, and like I, when I was, again, I talked about that Rocky Hill example, we actually, I met with the planner and we actually made a list of, and there was something like two hundred, much bigger areas, they had three industrial office park zones, two hundred and ninety lots. And we figured out what number of minimum acreage should we need to cut out, like, the lots that were problematic. But we don't want them over here, we want them here, though, so we've, I think we ultimately found fifteen acres, basically one, it only allowed one-third of the lots in the zone to be actually developed for that use. And included my client's lot, obviously, but it also allowed for some other people to get advantage of it, but it didn't allow a reposted stamp lot to take advantage of it.
So, yeah, right, I'd rather not be punitive, either say that I'm a small landowner at ten acres, which is pretty significant in Groton. And I can't, I can't take the same advantage of it, why, I mean.
I don't think it should go necessarily go to acreage, I think it might have some other things.
Okay, that's a good point.
Yeah, if it's possible, if the acreage thing would work, that's what I'm saying, it's specific, and maybe when you implied that rule, maybe it works fine. But that could be, I'll say, pretend accidental, just you targeted it, but that's not why. But I'm, I don't think necessarily it's the acreage thing, it's how close to centered rotten is this thing.
But it may be the best sample we have, right?
After all these years, it'd be nice to see something happen. It's unbelievable.
About the punitive for a second. So the point I think everyone raises is that it appears, and I'm just saying this is an observation, not judgment, at times, people utilize um affordable housing in ability to um to get around some zoning regulations. Not sure it's true, it appears in other towns. An ability to um to get around some zoning regulations. I'm sure it's true. It appears in other towns that has been the case, right?
You don't have to worry about it.
That's not applicable. That's not applicable.
So you're on the exempt list, the these, these examples, because you have more than ten percent of your housing stuff is affordable.
Way more. We're good.
Yeah, so other towns like.
However, we get a letter from Town Council saying.
I've been, every time I go to the Town Council for one of your school projects, I get absolutely attacked. Like, why isn't there more affordable housing? Why? Because where's the workforce housing? So, um, you know, that's obviously an issue that you got.
Well, excuse me, did I say that out loud? No, I think it's a big, it's a big complex issue, though, that, right? And do we therefore move a step forward in what we have the mission to do by doing something like this text amendment? Here's, good.
Yep.
Now, if you have bottom lines, if you build a thousand more units.
Yeah.
More that, I don't care what the price, price of it is, that will make more affordable housing.
Can't, I can't agree with you more. That is, that is the key, that it's the simplest key. Build the housing and the, and supply and demand, it's as simple as that.
So you have enough confusing.
I think I have, I think I have great direction. I'm gonna, I'll circle back with Deb and talk with my client. Uh, but we'll try to put together a text amendment that addresses these concerns, that that these very legitimate concerns, I think it's thoughtful and sensitively designed. That it gets.
Yeah, but we ought to look at it informally again to, when you have something before we go to a hearing. I don't want it.
Yeah, if you'd like to see something before we submit, that's easy enough to do.
For you formally, you wanna informally submit it.
Absolutely. I, and listen, anything we can do to engage in the stakeholder process and get you guys comfortable before we submit, I'd rather do that. Right. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate it. Sorry to be so late.
Oh, yeah, please.
But he is good.
Absolutely.
No, it's.
Yes. Very interesting.
Yeah. So what was that, a ten thousand dollar presentation?
Several thousand.
Will be still informal.
Yep, it is. The chair is.
Okay. All right. And we have one referral from Stollington, uh.
Right, that is similar to a referral that you reviewed a couple of months ago. Apparently, that application was denied, and this is a. A new application for a particular issue regarding height or an existing building.
Well, this is the elevator.
That's exactly right.
Elevator and downtown.
They messed up.
So at last time, you had no comment.
Yeah, do we have any comment on this thing? This.
We know why it was denied?
I do not. Um, there's some editorial uh paragraphs at the end of the applicant's letter that you can take a look at, but I I don't know.
Okay.
Because it really doesn't. Okay, motion reports, report a chair. We don't have anything. For not, for December. We usually have a get-together.
Hit that on my list.
So.
Oh, that's right.
Maybe.
Already.
Somebody can send out a poll or something for.
Yeah, it certainly won't be the December meeting.
No, no, I don't wanna, I think we found it's better to.
Yep.
If everybody agrees with that, just.
Yeah.
Number four, Sue knows what time it is.
And before ski season.
Yeah, somebody's got it.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Report a commission, I think Hal has.
I have a thing. Um, so it goes back to, I'm sorry I didn't catch it earlier, but I I went and listened to the entire meeting. Uh, that was while I was traveling when uh the fuel dispensing station at three eighty Long Hill Road was discussed, revisions to it were discussed. And one thing that did happen was everyone got all wrapped around what it looked like, and it looked okay, or it didn't look okay, and that didn't matter. But what was missed, what was just missed, was that the shape of the building changed. Specifically in the back of the building that faced.
Yeah.
The residential area, where before it was a slope roof and was that they, rid the the. At the back of the building was maybe twelve feet high, and now it's over twenty feet high. And it's a blank wall.
Hmm.
And we have limited opportunity to screen it. Before, we were all really very careful about it. Now, apparently, there's still different layers of landscaping, but they go march down the hill, so it's tough to do.
Hmm.
And that landscaping was an administrative thing to to watch out for. It's, so the only difference now is nothing has to change, except for the, what that administrative thing has to happen is to increase. Whatever that landscape is, because the sightline, I have a little diagram as to what happened. And it's, it's way worse now, and.
I knew you wouldn't like to build a house.
I don't like to build it.
Can't be addressed in in a a staff.
It it can, but the plans have not yet been finalized, so this can be added very easily.
And so it's just.
Yep, yep. If I can have that.
You absolutely can.
Were those the swishes that were pushed right up against that wall?
Yes, yes, it was tough to get them.
Because I know that you even had concerns then about the ability to get it, remain there.
That's right. And and frankly, the reasoning for having that wall be that high in the back of that building is pretty slight. They really didn't need to do it. It was just a simple thing for them to do, but that's been approved, so we can stay with it, but they need to screen it. Before, they were only screening, in fact, once, only needed to be much concerned about one area where the air conditioning system is. Now, everything's taller than.
Yeah, because we only looked at the peak of the building and not.
Correct, he said. And and it wasn't, it it, what I'm saying, it wasn't a malicious compliant thing. It was just, he was saying, here's how tall the building was, well, it was the peak.
That's all we.
And that's all, I I think that's all. I was, I was hearing about it. The only reason I even heard about it was that I met Peter Springsteen downtown, and he said, oh, you weren't there. I said, what did I miss? Well, I was surprised you weren't there. Oh, no, I really.
Beyond your drawing, is there other texts that you're saying, or just that it needs to be screened? Sorry.
Just needs to be screened.
Okay.
That's the best we can do, because we. So it just needs to screen it better now.
Anybody have anything else? The staff?
Um, just a couple of things, um, just some reminders of some upcoming meetings, community conversations regarding housing and what Groton can do to um. Increase housing is on the twentieth. Um, middle school, yeah, it's at the middle school. Um, and then we also have the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission, Conservation Commission, and E D C Commission, um. Meeting on the twenty-fifth. Um, this is to discuss plan of conservation and development. Um, we're hoping to have. Close to full commission participation, if possible. We have three folks who have committed to to attend. I think pretty much all of the Conservation Commission. Will be going. Um, so check your calendars and and just let us know if you can come.
The meeting at Groton, the housing workshop, is that five forty-five or four forty?
Five.
Five.
Yep.
I was traveling and went time zone difference, since all my stuff got messed up.
Right. So the joint meeting is, brother, is gonna be at four thirty. Yeah, so the earlier we'll have.
And then, and then I did go out on that?
It did, it did. Um, well, we can resend it, um, just to remind you guys. It was a an email from John Reiner. I know you've committed.
Yes, yeah, no, I remember that. I guess.
Is it in the big room?
It is, it is, and it'll be in person. That's right.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I have. You guys have anything else? Good.
Okay, and then we have our reports for applications and A S P. Does anybody have anything else? We'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and second, and second.
Two sections.
All right, thank you.